Call the North Topsail Beach Board of Alderman meeting. Let's go ahead and get started. So, we're gonna start with Alderman Leonard, but I would like to ask those folks in the Alder- in the audience to please put your cellphones on vibrate if they're on. And then, we're gonna start with Alderman Leonard for the invocation. So, if we could stand, please?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless this town and keep it a beautiful and friendly place to live. We pray for your guidance to enable this board to work together in unity to make fair and informed decisions today. We also pray that our police officers, firefighters, and members of our armed services here and around the world remain safe as they risk so much for our security. They earn our respect and admiration every day. We further ask you keep an especially watchful eye over our forward deployed service members who are serving in harm's way, as so many of them at various times have called North Topsail Beach home. This is especially true as we pause later this month to recognize the 79th anniversary of the brave actions of a few good men who erected a flag on a volcanic island in the Pacific Theater in a place called Iwo Jima. We also pray that our town be spared the ravages of hurricanes and other natural disasters, and that everyone associated with the town remains safe and secure. We ask this in his name. Amen.
To me.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item will be the approval of the agenda. And the one thing I do want to just make sure everybody is aware of, we- I would request that we remove the closed session at the end because our town attorney is sick today. So, if we could have a motion on the agenda?
So move.
With the removal of the-
With removal of the closed session?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then, we are going to move right on to the manager's report, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Darian.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I'll touch briefly just on the beach projects. Mr. Fran Way is here this morning with us, so he'll be giving a full report on everything. I requested a survey to be completed by the engineers following the back-to-back storms that we've recently had. So, he's here to present today and discuss possible recommendations with you all. Phase five work continues. The contractor's been back to placing normal volumes, averaging 15,000 cubic yards per week since mid-January timeframe. They are now working Monday through Sa- uh, through Saturday. There is a temporary slowdown with progress due to delayed expansion permitting with the 421 sand production being slower than normal. The slowed production of beach compati- compatible sand has affected the progress. However, it is the town's expectation that we will continue on and complete the project by the end of the current environmental permitting window, which ends on April 30th. We also have the schedule pending from the contractor to schedule the remainder of the phase one project for this environmental window as well. Fire Station Two, work continues on the fire station project. Financing and construction is planned. Since the last meeting, all tasks related to the financing and preparation of construction documents have been completed. The preliminary abstract schedule that I've discussed with the architect is as follows. The contract will be reviewed and signed with bonds and insurance I expect to have back this week, the week of February 7th. Pre-construction meeting is scheduled for February 28th. Job site setup will be March 15th, and demolition will start March 25th. If anything should change, I will certainly let everyone know. But, right now, that is the, um, the schedule.
Alice, I know that we have temporarily set up at a home down the street as a rental for the folks. With where we are with the schedule, is there any issue with that lease running out, or are we-
Well, once it's, um, once it's up for renewal in October, we'll look to renew that.
Okay. Thank you.
And we do expect the, the project to take, um, 12 to 16 months in total. The 2024-2025 budget, we've started on that process. The proposed budget calendar has been provided to the board. It's also attached to my report this morning. The finance director and I held budget meetings throughout January with department heads reviewing their requested budget to assess departmental needs and to review capital improvement projects. The budget workshops are scheduled for February 21st, February 22nd, as well as March 13th and March 14th from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and they'll be held here at Town Hall in the boardroom. Does the board have any issues with the proposed schedule?
I don't have any issue with the schedule, but the one thing I did want to try and work in, and I'm wondering if we could use a portion of this day is just for, um, setting goals for the, for us as a board. I don't believe that the goals that we would set have any impact to the budgets that the department heads are working on, but I would like to make sure that we have goals in mind for this upcoming year so that we're able to measure whether we've met those goals or not as a board.
Okay. I would suggest doing that on the first meeting, which would be the February 21st.
Maybe just for two hours. Could we carve out? Because we usually only take one day for the budget, so we should hopefully have enough time.
Yes. Historically, um, the last couple of years, we've knocked everything out in the first scheduled day, and there was not a need for the second day, but we always plan for one just in case it's needed. And there's also time built in there, too. If the board needs additional meetings scheduled, um, there's time allows in the schedule to do that.
Perfect.
Yes, they are public meetings.
I've got a conflict February 21st. I'll see if I can move it, but I don't know if I can. The other, uh, comment I have is, I think that we should be- I know we've got the Capital Improvement Fund, and we're looking at, we're building a new fire station, but I think we need to be more proactive in our strategic planning for the next five to seven years. So, as part of the budget hearings, I would like the department heads to come up with a list of the big capital improvement items that they think we're gonna need in town so that we can begin to think about how we're gonna achieve those through, uh, the Capital Improvement Fund, but also through grants. Because grants really is the way to go for a small town like ours. Because we just don't have the revenue stream from our property tax to do other than public safety, administration, and beach nourishment. And for other capital, big capital improvement projects, where is the money gonna come from? Fire station, $5.6 million, you know? I know we've been putting off a ladder truck, so I'm sorting my soapbox here, but I would like to see us have, as part of our budget process, a section on strategic planning for the next five to seven, even 10 years, so that the, the, the board and the town knows, you know, what we're gonna be needing in the future.
So, I would just say, though, I think that we do have a list already in place from the last budget year and from also when we created the capital improvements plan. So, I do believe that Ms. Darian and, and the, the, um, department heads could review that and see if we're missing anything, but it was pretty inclusive.
We do have a five-year plan, um, that, that was laid out, um, that we started two years ago. But, I will go back and ask department heads to revisit that and, um, plug in any items that they foresee a need for.
Well, and if I can, just add one thing. You know, Alice has talked before about how to get this kind of stuff, you know? And if you look at, one of the things, you know, from working with the county, having that fire tax, you know, effectively pays for the fire station for us. And I think that was a very good move on the county, because they're given, they give three, three cents of every dollar of theirs collected in property taxes back to us in an agreement with us to use for fire safety and firehouses and stuff. So, um, when you look at the financing that you did in the last meeting, that's more than gonna cover that. But, I think to Mike's point, there's other things out there we can take a look at as well, so.
Right. I just didn't want folks watching-
It's a rolling pack, you're saying.
That didn't- Yes, because we did create that. We do have it. It's, it does exist. It may need to be updated, but it exists.
And I think, you know, all we've talked about, Mayor, is they, we wanna make sure there's not an elephant, you know, in year six.
Yeah, I understand.
And potentially, we could have a review of where we are with the five-year plan as part of the budget, the budget meeting?
And that's what we did last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll be part of the process.
This is more for those in the audience to know that, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry. Keep going, Alice.
You're good. A public hearing will be held on April 3rd, and that'll be at the regu- uh, the regularly scheduled Board of Alderman meeting. Um, and the budget and ordinance adoption will be held on May 1st and at the regular board meeting as well. Any further questions or discussion on the budget process? Okay. Grants. Recently, the North Carolina Emergency Management announced that they were accepting application for grants funded through the 2023 Appropriations Act, the Emergency Management Disaster Relief and Mitigation Fund. In January, I worked on preparing a grant application for two stormwater projects that were deemed by the Board of Alderman as a high priority. The two critical areas chosen for immediate improvement are Island Drive near the south fire station, which we refer to as Fire Station Number Two, and the other on New River Inlet Road at, at Richard Peters Park. Uh, I submitted an application on January 26th through the, um, North Carolina Department of Public Safety for $1,261,607.06. I included $230,000 to complete engineering and obtaining permits, similar to, if you recall, what we submitted through, through the LASSI application, but reworked it a little bit to include a probable cost of construction. So, the little over 1.2 million requested includes 5% inflation costs for construction as well. Just to note that this grant is 100% funded with no cost share and paid on a reimbursement basis. And so, there will be no, uh, matching required by the town, should we be successful in the application. Uh, the target date for applicant, applicant notifications is April of 2024. I would just like to say, uh, thank you to the Ocean City Citizens Council, as well as the county manager, David Smitherman, um, for providing letters of support for these projects, and I included those in our grant application. Beach VITEX. The announcement was made in January that the Coastal Storm Recovery Fund was funded by the North Carolina General Assembly, which allocated $10 million to the Division of Water Resources Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund. The deadline to submit application is March 8th. This is a cost-share grant. This is an initiative that we budgeted for last year. However, we paused, uh, to wait for these grant funds to become available once again, and with the intent that we would submit a joint application with the towns of Topsail and Surf City. I met with the other town managers, along with coastal transplants, that, and asked for updated cost estimates for beach VITEX removal. We will need to plan for a 5% increase, uh, from what I presented to the board last year. This is based on primarily due to chemical costs and, of course, the growth of the VITEX from the original survey period. There's 26 sites that are identified in North Topsail Beach having VITEX. Updated costs that I've received is $227,640 for the first year of treatment. Estimate for year two of treatment is $71,820. Year three is anticipated at $50,400, and year four and year five is anticipated to be $26,250 each. During our call, I requested, um, additional details, um, on the 26 sites that were identified with the VITEX with North Topsail Beach. There are some sites that are more inundated than others with VITEX that may require a different hybrid approach. Ordinarily, they would not go in and replant until all the chemical treatments are completed. However, um, some areas are very widespread, and we would likely need to do some type of replanting. So, I just wanna make you all aware of that, uh, because we don't want to compromise the dune system in the process of treating the VITEX. Direction is pending. The town attorneys are regard, with the town attorneys regarding easements or a property owner acknowledgement. So, the town's attorneys are working through that, um, right now. So, we're awaiting direction from them on that matter. Also included on today's agenda for consideration is an ordinance to prohibit anyone from planting or maintaining beach VITEX. This will assist and will be included in our joint grant application. Surf City currently has an ordinance in place.
Alice, on the VITEX, I'm not sure that everybody, uh, or the property owners know what VITEX is on their dunes. So, and I know we'll get into it, but with the ordinance, is there, is there something? Do we have anything displayed? Yeah? Educational?
Coastal Transplants is working on an educational piece that we'll use. They have, they prepared one, um, last year, and it'll be more of just updating that. And once that's completed, we'll put that on our website, and of course, we'll communicate that out to, to the public. But, but I do think that they're the subject matter experts, and the education should, um, come from them.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
So, the question I have, Mayor, has the grant application process been clarified amongst the three towns? Is there still going to be one grant?
The intent is, between the three towns, there's an agreement that we submit one joint application. And we have emailed a few times to the state, making sure that that is, uh, acceptable to them. We have not gotten anything back that says that we cannot submit it as one application. So, at this point, because there is a, a very tight turnaround time on this, of course, we're moving forward as, with the understanding of, and intent of one application.
Can I just do one quick follow-up? And I, I think we know this as a board, and Mike, you're the expert in this. One of the problems we has, if you don't do the whole island, it's almost worthless to only do it piece by piece, right? So, because it'll just migrate wherever you're doing. So, it has to be coordinated with everybody here. And also, this is an ongoing thing, right? This is not, you can't just do it once and you're done. But, again, to the mayor's point, you know, I've been out there and, and talked to people. There's confusion over what they think are beach plants and VITEX. And Mike, you've made presentations before about the difference in the root system, and how one is bad for the dunes and one's good, so.
Oh, and that's why we're really trying to work together on this, because if you recall, we budgeted last year, and we could've moved forward with the projects, but it just made more sense to wait for that grant funding, grant funding to be opened up again, and for the other two towns to be on board and us to do it all at the same time. Because if we treated it and they did not, it, it just, we wouldn't see the same benefits.
And the only other question I had, and if you'd like me to wait for Mr. Way's presentation, I can, but I'm a little bit concerned about the schedule still being pending for the remainder of Phase One and with the environmental window, where it is. So, I'm just wondering when we expect that to come in? Do you want me to wait for Fran? I can wait for Fran. Do you wanna wait till we get further into yours? Yeah. Okay. But I would like to make sure we cover that.
But that's a separate contract, isn't it?
I know. I'm just saying I wanna make sure we cover it, because clocks ticking. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Darian? Thank you. Okay. We're gonna move on to the open forum. Clark, do we have anybody who's registered?
Yes. Megan Scheibner.
If you could, um, just your name and your address, please?
Good morning. My name is Megan Scheibner. I live at 2364 New River Inlet Road. I'm a homeowner, but probably more importantly, I'm a full-time resident at that address. And I just wanna know what the town's plan is going forward to deal with the town's sandbags that are destroyed outside my home and really causing a hazard. Many have no sand in them. They're full of giant shards of glass, metal. They're wrapping around the support beams of my home, and so, they're really a danger to me, my grandchildren, my visitors, my dogs. When I called the town last about the ones wrapped around the support, I was told that that might be helpful to my home or that I could take care of it myself. And to be quite honest, the disaster that is out there is well beyond the scope of a homeowner. And it's not my sandbags, but now, I'm being asked to take care of them. So, just wanting to know what the plan is going forward.
Thank you. I mean, typically, we listen at this, but I will give an update once everybody's done speaking.
Okay.
Who is next?
Steve Scheibner.
Um, I'm gonna go before Steve. I think he'd like to speak last. Uh, my name is Patrick Hayes. I own a home at 2342 New River Inlet Road. I would also like to speak to the condition of the beach. I understand that there is a revetment committee. However, that committee has not met since November of 2022. And I would like to implore the Alderman's Council to do everything within their power to encourage that committee to begin meeting on a regular schedule and to publish that schedule of meetings so that homeowners have the opportunity to engage with them and become involved in moving this, um, issue with the sandbags and the revetment forward, and also to ask the town to do, um, reasonable and timely maintenance of the condition of the bags outside of the repairs dictated in the settlement. I believe that the town has a due diligence to maintain the revetment to a standard pending the outcome of the settlement. Because allowing it to continue to deteriorate further while we're waiting for that process to work through ends up costing both the town and the homeowners more money. And in the four years since I've owned my home, I've gone from having three layers of bags outside of my house to having one. We're down to the, the base layer. And as Megan said, the remains of the other bags are there preventing a, a safety hazard to both people and wildlife. I've personally freed three pelicans that had become entrapped in remains of bags. And, and so, I think the town has quite an environmental disaster on its hands as these bags continue to, um, break up and, uh, turn into a nuisance. And I would hate to see a child or a swimmer get entrapped in them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah MacLeod? Oh, I'm sorry. You're gonna go now? Sorry.
Yes. I'm Steve Scheibner, and I live at 2364 New River Inlet Load with, road with that cutie right there. And we're homeowners, and that's our, our full-time home. I also serve on the BICEC committee here. Sorry for the getup today, but I'm headed to Washington, DC, right after this to talk at a Senate Commerce Committee meeting about aviation. They're considering raising the pilot retirement age, and they need an old guy. All right? So, they, I got tapped for that, because I'm old. Yeah. All right. So, at any rate, um, I wanted to, uh, I, I wanna make a proposal, and here's the proposal. This is the revetment settlement, and if you're wondering how I got a hold of it, it's on the internet, okay? So, uh, it's been six-plus years since this was agreed to. And I, like Patrick, and like Megan, and like some of the others down at that end of the island, have inherited this by, by proxy, because we bought a house that was part of the original revetment plaintiff side of the thing, but we're not allowed to speak on it because we weren't the original plaintiff. So, we just have to kinda sit between a rock and a hard place and-
That's not, that's not true.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna speak on it today, then. Thank you.
That's not true, though.
And, uh, so, at any rate, uh, we weren't part of the original plaintiffs. Let's put it that way.
Right. But you inherited the home, and if that home paid into the fees?
Oh.
You were, that attorney works for you.
Okay. That's, that's great, because I was told, I was told just the opposite, that the revetment committee was the only one that could speak on this issue, and that is the homeowners, we just had to-
No.
Except that. Except that in my conversation with Patrick off to the side, when we were faced to a named kind of a thing, he mentioned the fact that the plaintiff's attorney has basic, will not communicate with them.
And I have that on my notes, so I'm gonna stop.
Yeah. So, that's, so anyway, all of that's true, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, I've been talking to some of the original plaintiffs, talking to some of the new homeowners, talking to some folks here in town in government leadership. And what it, the conversation about the revetment, which was supposed to be done six years ago, right? In November of 20, or 2017. The conversation very quickly descends into a finger-pointing blame assessing episode, and it's just come to a screeching halt. There's no revetment committee meetings scheduled. The last one was 15 months ago. That one was finger-pointing blame assessing, and when you talk to either side, they have a plenty of blame for everybody else on the other side. Here's what I'm proposing today. I think what was missing from this, from the onset, was that somebody, some person, needed to be set in charge of either being the facilitator or the manager, or whatever name you wanna give it, to see this settlement over the finish line. In other words, if you go back to both sides, they're just gonna point at each other, and it's gonna fall apart, which it has. I'm here today to tell you, I would like to volunteer to do that at no charge. I have experience in this area. I've taught Fortune 500 companies in a course that I wrote on, uh, on proactive problem-solving, and I have worked as a facilitator to help sides not get bogged down in the finger-pointing blame assessing, uh, that we see here today in our town. So, um, and I have a horse in the race. I would like to see sandbags out in front of my house. And every day that goes by, the money that was set aside dwindles in the sense that inflation kills the amount of sandbags that we're gonna get. And my house is in peril. All right? Just come down there and take a look, folks. If you live down there, you'd be hopping mad. And so, I'm here to say, I would like to, to, um, volunteer to do that. I don't know what the process is, but if you can give me that authorization, and if not me, somebody, give them that authorization to see this thing over the finish line. I would love to volunteer and do that. If you wanna give it a title, I used to be a pastor. You could call it the vicar of the revetment. Or the Sultan of the Settlement. Either one are interchangeable. I'll take either title, if you'd like to. All kidding aside, though, I'm dead serious about this, all right? Your thoughts on that?
Yeah. I would like to, I'd like to speak. So, I was in the last sandbag revetment meeting, and first of all, I wanna say I don't believe that there were any finger pointing. It was, I thought, a productive meeting. But, there were follow-ups that were, um, discussed at that meeting that still have not come back to the board. So, the way this works is, the litigants are supposed to have folks on their committee, and we have some from our town board and staff that meet. I don't know who's on the litigate committee anymore. Ms. Whitford was here for that meeting. And the plan that was presented, and I'm just gonna speak to some key issues. The plan that was presented to the board, the sandbags did not reach any further than the end of the beach club. So, there are homes that are in this same situation that you are, that stretch from the inlet all the way down to Topsail Reef.
Right.
I personally do not believe it's fair to have taken money from these litigants, and they're not getting any sandbags. So, I had requested that attorney that was there, for you all that live down there, as well as Ms. Whitford. I wanted somebody to communicate to them, hey, we have a plan that we would like the board to approve, and guess what? It only goes this far, and you're not getting anything. But, if you want, you can pay some more money, and we'll get you sandbags at the same time.
Yep.
That's not fair. That's not adequate. That's not appropriate. And I personally, and I'm only speaking for myself, I am not gonna speak for any other members on the board, I've not heard another word since then. Because that attorney told Ms. Whitford not to volunteer to communicate with those folks.
Right. Well, that's why I'm, you're making my point. That's exactly what's going on. Both sides, and there's plenty of blame to go around, have done this to each other, and the whole thing is dead in the water.
But, if you read, if you read the settlement, we're in the position, we're on the committee, but we're in the position- but we're in the position as a board, because we're the board today, I'm not speaking as a revetment committee, we're in the position to approve the proposals that come through with the engineers to move the project forward.
Besides the things that were plainly laid out for the town here, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them.
Right.
You can read all of them.
I did.
That you don't have to wait for any approval to do. Town agrees to reasonably maintain the revetment and the condition it is in after the repair until the terminal grinder jet is built.
After the repair, after the repair.
Right.
The repair's not done.
But my, the point is, six years later, we're not going to get more sandbags, we're going to get less. So if you didn't think it was fair six years ago, it's less fair today.
No, this was 15 months ago, I didn't think.
This is my opinion, the Army Corps to figure out what's going on and get that permitted for a groin or whatever, or we wait for something to be done with the revetment committee over a period of time, and he's going to talk about trying to get permitting done this year and get all this, because none of this can be done without permits, all right? So what we, and you know, you said on the BISAC committee, the whole point there is, we're going to take the ball in our hands as, as a town, as a committee, and fix the beach, and if those things play out and they're additive, that's fine. But if they're not, you know, I mean, I'm not willing to wait five years for the Army Corps to come back with a groin analysis and go through litigation, I think that's a mistake.
Right.
Okay, and frankly, my own opinion is, I'm not willing to wait till something gets done, the revetment and all the lawyers and stuff to get together, we just have to assume we have to fix the stuff, and that's the whole beach, not just there, and move forward.
Right.
And I think that's what we're going to be talking about.
Well, and I think if, and Connie, I'll turn it over to you in a second, but I think the best path forward on this is to go ahead and get a meeting as Alderman Leonard scheduled on the books, and if we could just get the names to Alice, as far as who needs to be there, who wants to be there, because I don't know, as I said, still on the litigate side, who's still, I'm sure Sid is still there, but I don't know who else. She would have the background, she would be good to be at the meeting, or at least be able to listen in on the phone. So if you guys can get some names over to us, we will regroup together and try and figure this, figure this out, but the attorneys will need to be there, because while we would like to do a restart and get it done, we are still bound by, both sides are still bound by what was agreed upon, so we need to figure that out. And I'm sorry, Connie, did you want to say?
I was basically going to say the same thing as you. Let's, as soon as we can, let's get a meeting going, we'll figure it out, getting all the people in place, and get this ball rolling again, especially, I have a lot of environmental concerns about it, I'm sure everybody has a lot of concerns in many different ways, but we could talk about this all day, but I think that we need to...
Then the rubber can step in.
Can the, can the board just take a vote to have, to ask me to schedule a revetment committee meeting? Yeah. Nancy, would you mind just asking around the board?
We need a motion.
Do we need a motion?
Motion and a second.
I'll make a motion that the board schedule a meeting of the revetment committee.
Second.
Be the town manager.
Request.
Through the town manager.
Yeah, through the town manager. So we, motion and a second.
Yep.
Alice, do you want to call it, or am I good with all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Right, and my, my offer still stands, so.
Any information, you can put these on contact information.
Yep, well, I got all, I've got all of it.
Because you know, as you know, if you're, you're going to be herding cats in this one.
Yes, I know. Oh, yeah, I'm worried, that's what I do.
Yeah, to, just to clarify, I will not schedule a meeting until I get a list of contacts to...
I'll give you as comprehensive a list as I can get.
That's fine.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Steve.
Okay, do we have, and we have Hannah, I think you mentioned, Ms. MacLeod?
Hi, Hannah MacLeod, 1835 New River Inlet Road. First thing, I noticed that the crossover is going to be discussed, the crossover is caution lights and the type of thing. I may have missed it, but I didn't see the Beach Access 1, the County Beach Access 1, in that review. At Beach Access 1, there's parking on the sound side of the street, there is a curve, that's where it goes to 35 miles an hour, nobody pays any attention to anything, everybody wants just to get to the beach, so I would ask that you put that on the, on the agenda as well, that, to review that area as well. And my other is for the planning board.
I did, just for information, I did request that that area be considered as one of the new crosswalk areas in the last board meeting when we were talking about crossover, so it's already been brought up before the board and the Public Works Director.
Good, it should be. And like I said, I might have missed it in the, in the information that I received. The other is the planning board. As a member of the planning board, we are, serve at the pleasure of the Board of Aldermen, and it is all volunteer, and there is some discussion about changing the day of the month after 20-some years, and I just felt that it would be professional of the board to maybe contact the board members and see if maybe there was a common day that we could get together to do this. I believe that having the meeting on the, excuse me, on the day after your board meeting is going to cause delays in any kind of response from your, your board, from the planning board. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, is there anybody else? No? Okay, we're going to move on to public presentations and hearings, and I'm going to ask Planning Director Ms. Hill to come up for the application from the Seaview Fishing Pier. I'm also going to request a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Right, and applicant starting?
Ms. Hill, let me start, because our, our board attorney up here just suggested that I do ask around, because our, our attorney's not here, if anybody has any conflicts and should be opt out.
Recused.
Recused, no? Okay.
Can we get this up there?
Ricky, can we please display it? Okay, now we're good.
Yeah, I was going to ask him if he could go to Attachment 1, and if it would be possible, if you could kind of zoom in on the center, so people could see it. Okay, that's the staff report, if you go to the, I think it's on the next two pages after that, after the attachment, and then there's the, there you go, Attachment 1. Okay, on the center of the page, scoot up, scoot up, scoot up, scoot up, or scoot down, I'm sorry. Yep, perfect. And can you make that bigger?
Oh, you zoomed in. There you go.
Can you all, yeah?
Is that on the screen too?
Yes, sir.
Got dehydrated all of a sudden. All right, I'll go ahead and get started. The applicant is Seaview Fishing Pier Greg Ludlam for 124 Fishing Pier Lane. He's requesting a review and approval of the plans for minor modifications for a restroom addition, which is 15 and a half by 28 feet, and an uncovered deck, 6 by 6 feet, attached to the existing variety store and restaurant commercial building, which is 51 by 34 feet existing at the Seaview Fishing Pier. Property's own B2 business. The existing land use is for the business, Fishing Pier, for the purpose of this district is to provide an area for fishing piers and fish houses. The surrounding land use, zoning and land uses to the north is R10 vacant, east is R10 duplexes, and to the south is the Atlantic Ocean, to the west is the, is also zone B2, which is a hotel. The site improvements include the existing 51 by 32 commercial retail space and a shed and the commercial pier. The size of the property is 2.5 acres. Compatibility with the land use plan, future land use map indicates mixed use business. The proposed accessories, the decks and the enclosed outside storage and service areas, and the principal use of variety store and restaurant served by the proposed restroom addition are all permitted by right. Development plans involving new construction of commercial space must be approved by the Board of Aldermen before issuing a zoning permit. The planning board shall review and make recommendations prior to recommending action by the Board of Aldermen. Minor modifications shall follow the same development review and approval process required for issuance of a development approval, and the review and approval of any major modifications of that approval. And as you may recall, that was a change in the adoption of the UDO, or North Carolina General Statute 160D in 2021. The Fishing Pier and the retail building were established prior to the towns and corporation. The building inspector has reviewed the preliminary engineer building plans, and it meets with the North Carolina State Building Code. Fire marshal recommends that the emergency light above the exit door be moved to the center of the wall across from the bathroom doors, due to not knowing what's going to be stored or how it will be stored in the storage room. A fire extinguisher, extinguisher will need to be mounted in the hallway. Periodic walkthroughs by both the building inspector and the fire marshal will transpire while construction is in progress. The police chief has reviewed the plans and has no objections to the proposal. The Public Works Director recommends that the asphalt connection to the New River Inlet Road be repaired. And before I go with the planning board's recommendation, the attachments with the staff report include, include the preliminary plot plan, which we've brought up along with the engineered plans, the elevation certificate, the V-zone certificate. There's also a DEQ stormwater permit from 2015 that I asked the engineer to provide, as it was indicated on the plat of survey for the proposed restroom addition and shed addition. That engineered stormwater has already been installed, and we'll get to that in just a minute. The KAMA minor permit has been issued, unwas intention to provide sewer service is included, there was a legal notice that was published in the Jacksonville Daily News, and a public notice included on the website, and a message sent out to the Sunshine, Sunshine List, that's included as Attachment 9. And I had received an email from Morgan Starling from the Jacksonville Daily News with a list of questions, and my responses are included as Attachment 10 in the staff report. Also, Attachment 11, which came in after the staff report was provided to the town clerk and posted on the website, was a response from NC DOT, which addresses the Public Works Director in the planning board's comments with regards to the driveway connection. The, on January the 11th, 2024, the planning board reviewed Mr. Ludlam's application, and recommends to the Board of Aldermen to conduct the plan, the public hearing that we're having today, and to review and approve the development plan as indicated in attachments 1 through, and I'll say from 1 through 7 through 11 now, with the condition that the applicant and staff coordinate with NC DOT to address the driveway entrance. Mr. Fontana seconded the motion, and the motion passed unanimously 4 to, 4 to 0. So in, when I reached out to NC DOT and Kristin Sperakis, the district engineer responded, she said that NC DOT would not consider this, the proposed development for the bathroom in the, in the shed, a change in land use that would warrant a revision to the driveway permit. The existing driveway to New River Inlet Road is considered a commercial driveway, and so it's the responsibility of the property owner to maintain. So Greg had commented during the planning board meeting, and he's here also for any additional comment or questions, but periodically, he goes and puts gravel down between the driveway and the asphalt, and the problem appears to be the stormwater runoff from the road, that's worsening, and of course, the traffic coming on and off that driveway. So he's constantly going out and putting gravel, you know, back on that entrance. The storm, the stormwater for the property, as I, as I said, has been installed, as evidenced by that stormwater permit, and that seems to be doing the job maintaining the stormwater on site. It's just the runoff from the road and the traffic on the road, and it's a constant maintenance issue for Seaview Fishing Pier. So we would request that you would approve the application as submitted for the addition of the restroom addition and the uncovered deck.
Deb, I just had one question, and then I'll see who on the board has questions, and then also who in the audience may have questions. You had read off a few things, and I'm wondering if what we're asking is for an approval with conditions like moving the exit sign?
No, just to approve the development, because when it comes to the, the building code and the fire code...
Okay.
And planning, we're going to, you know, that is, the responsibility for meeting the codes...
Okay.
Lies with each of us, both with the building inspector, fire marshal, and myself...
Okay.
To work together. I did not include mine in there, or a sentence in there. I had already done the planning review on the documents, and so the documents that are included in the staff report are the corrected documents.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to know the board, you know, whether they needed to include...
It's just a simple approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and does anyone I know, yes, go ahead, Laura.
Deb, in looking at the new proposed deck on the south side, I'm wondering the impact to the south side of the building, and whether the, whether everyone's looked at the existing conditions of that building, and how that's going to affect attaching to that south side, which I didn't see in any of the documentation.
That would be included in the V-zone certification and in the engineered plans, where the...
Okay. Yes, sir.
And just on clear, on the repairing of the driveway, you're not making, this is a simple approval, you're not making that a condition, right?
No, it, it was initially brought up by the Public Works Director, and it was addressed during the planning board meeting, and it was also, I reached out to NC DOT and, and provided their response, and it, and it was all, you know, we had the discussion both with the condition of the driveway, as well as stormwater and the stormwater efforts by the applicant historically since 2015, certainly during the planning board meeting.
I mean, I, this has nothing to do with this, but I've noticed him throwing gravel out there repeatedly. I guess, I'm, I'm fine with what you propose, because what I'm concerned about, I don't like tagging something else that has nothing to do with what we're doing.
Right.
And when you throw in something like, you got to repair this if you want this, I, I, I'm really uncomfortable with that, so I was glad to say that's not what you're doing. If we, if we approve this, then you're going to go through the normal permitting process, and all those things will be taken care of.
That's correct.
So I'm fine with that. I, I just don't like tagging stuff that has nothing to do with what we're doing.
I will say, if I may address that concern, that's one of the benefits that a local government has by having a minor modification come back through the legislative review process, to where that if there is a concern that you can, that the, that, say that the staff didn't address or wasn't able to address, that the board would make that a condition of the, of the approval, the proverbial carrot on the stick, as it were. This is not a quasi-judicial decision, this is a legislative decision, so you'd be able to make those conditions.
I also assume when the permitting process comes up to what, you know, Laura talked about, if there's issues about safety and stuff, you're not going to issue the building permit unless they correct the safety issues. This is just the first, as you said, a simple change in what we're doing, and then they're going to have to comply with everything that you want it to comply with.
That's correct. Both with the fire, both with the fire code, with builder code, with zoning, and with KAMA, with unwas, yes.
Yes, sir.
Since the subject of the driveway came up, and I understand that it has been disconnected from this, and it certainly would not keep me from approving it, when it comes to that, I, I do think something more than spreading gravel out there needs to be done, because that gravel ends up out on the road, and then it ends up getting kicked up, and, you know, I'm not wanting to eat a windshield.
We're also got a resurfacing project in a couple years.
But it's something more, we need, you know, the owner, I would like to see the owner do more. And again, you know, I know that's not what we're here to approve, but since the subject did come up, I'd like to see something more permitted done there to repair that.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting all the water from the bridge off of the 20-degree angle on the road. I'm getting all the drops there. Thomas went down there 15 years ago with the water, and they dug it out from under all of the bridge right there. Took a half foot of water away. A ditch.
You're the low spot.
I'm in the low spot. I got the same problem there, y'all got it apart.
Yep.
I can't control that. Tom, I love to fix it better than even Bob before. I'm telling you about not the low ground. It's going up the road because it's higher than the road.
Right.
Everything is higher than the road there, you know?
I do have to say Deb's explanation was very good. I use, I'm at the fishing pier, and I have noticed that when it starts to get a little potholly, that it is repaired quickly. And I appreciate that for our residents and visitors using the road, you do get it fixed quickly.
Are you done, Ms. Old? Do you have more?
I'm finished, unless there's any additional questions or if there's any questions that you would have of the applicant.
I think the board is satisfied, but I don't know if the applicant wants to speak or if there's anybody else here that wants to speak as it relates.
Was anybody signed up?
Okay, okay.
You can close at the public hearing.
I'm going to do it. So I'm going to request a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so what we're looking for is a motion to either approve or deny the application from Seaview Fishing Pier, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for the pier, repairing it and doing all the other stuff you do there after the.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, no, you got to stay for the whole meeting now.
No.
I walk by that pier every day, so.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Mr. Fran Way for our coastal engineer update, and we have him in person today, so thank you, Fran.
Hi, members of the board. I'm the coastal engineer working with the town on the beach nourishment projects. I would like to mention that I am separate from the engineer for the revetment-related items. They are completely separate components to the beachfront system.
Why, Fran, why'd you say that?
There was, yes, there was discussion about, yes, the engineer, and that was not me. But, so we're going to get up here to the February 2024. Ricky, can you go to the next one? The first one is just an overview of the North Topsail Beach shoreline from Phase 1 up near New River Inlet down to Phase 5, down near the Surf City limit. Right as soon as you come on Highway 210, it's, and, you know, right about here, that's the separation between Phases 3 and 4. Up in Phase 1, we still are planning on, you know, getting about 20,000 cubic yards of material out there this winter. The Phase 5 project is ongoing down on the southwestern area.
Fran, can I just, I just want to be clear for the folks in the audience. So we do include Phase, you were not the engineer on the sandbag revetment committee, I mean, that's 100% true, but you are still working with us and the Army Corps of the Sea about moving the groin project forward.
Yes.
So while you're not talking about the sandbags here, we do still include the whole island in the updates that you're giving at this point in time, and then Mr. Gibson will be doing more of the storm update.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Sure. And then the state grant in Phase 4, and just basically as soon as you get off the island, just to, you know, south, southwest, that, you know, hopefully we get the start of that this season here in April. You can go to the next slide. Thanks, Ricky. This is up in the Phase 1 area. This is the project. This is a difficult image right here, but basically, you know, the town did do, and you can see some of those images on the bottom, the town did do some nourishment here last year. Last year, there was also an Army Corps of Engineers project where they put material. A lot of the material has moved on. You know, I was even up there this morning, and, you know, that water is up onto the sandbags, and, you know, obviously, there were several talks about that condition up there. The town still does have, we could, the town still has headroom in this permit up in this area to put, you know, the full, fully permitted with 75,000 cubic yards of material. So there is some headroom there to put material, and that's part of the 20,000 that we're going to put up there this winter, and that will, that will, that doesn't just stay in one spot, as you know, sand moves, and so that will add to that entire system up there down, you know, up and down the beach. That 20,000 will help, and then just.
Let me interrupt you because Chris is going to address this.
Okay.
Okay, and what we've talked about is not doing stuff piecemeal.
Okay.
So he's going to talk about the plan.
Sure.
Okay, I don't want people to be misled that we're saying, oh, we've got a permit, so we're going to go move forward, because if doing that affects something else negatively, that always has to be in the consideration. I think, Chris, you're going to address that in your presentation, right?
Hold on, because I think this goes back to, they were asked to do an assessment of the beach following the past two storms, so if there's any recommendations for Phase 1, that's to be covered, and I think that's what.
Right.
Yes.
So, yeah, and, you know, this winter has been energetic. You know, the entire beachfront and the beaches up and down the coast have been getting, seen some erosion. As I was mentioning to, you know, Mayor Provost Tim Benson was mentioning that there is kind of a classic winter-summer dynamic to the beach system where in the winter, the sand does kind of leave the upper beach and go to the lower beach, and then, you know, in the summer, especially, you know, May, June, July, that material does make it, the beach does recover. So there is some natural recovery, and then, and we can talk about that a little bit here, but we are expecting that, but, you know, we realize we've had some of the highest water levels, non-tropical storm-related water levels we've seen in, you know, decades. So, yes, we are seeing that, and the high water levels, the, you know, unprecedented high water levels are adding to that. Can we go to the next slide, Ricky? Phase 5 is continuing. As the town manager, Alice, mentioned, the project is kind of back. They're catching up to where there was a slowdown, and now they are catching up, and they do have the material, and the trucks are running at, you know, at the expected anticipated rate. The project, you know, has been, you know, placed, we're still on schedule, we had a little bit of buffer in the schedule. There were some, some of those delays did eat into that buffer, but, you know, we are still seeing, you know, February and March, you know, that this contract should be, you know, we're hoping, you know, to finish this in, you know, early April and to begin the Phase 4 project by then. And then the next slide, Ricky? And then this is the Phase 4 project that will continue. We, you know, schedule-wise, it is, you know, in April, we would like to start this project, and that's where we are. And then the last slide, Ricky? The 20,000 cubic yard placement this winter, I have been coordinating and, you know, going back and forth with the town manager on this one and trying to get this project happening. It is probably, as Alderman Grant mentioned, it's probably a two-to-three week project, so it is, and obviously, we need to get this in, you know, during this window. So, you know, I'm working with the contractor on that. There is enough sand to do this project. The contractor was, you know, the sand supply issue was, you know, much more of a problem. He does seem to have fixed it. Yeah, I'm working with, I had some back and forth with CM Mitchell this morning, and I'll get you the schedule here, but he is, they are ready to mobilize, and they can do two separate teams, so that Phase 5 will continue at that rate, and there will be a second set of equipment up here using, you know, the Jenkins Way access.
Is there going to be an issue with Phase 1 with the high water levels that you're seeing, and being able to get the sand from the beach?
During, and even in Phase 5, sometimes when we are getting these incredibly high water times, it has affected the production there, and that is another problem. It has been, you know, a little stormier than usual, and with those high water levels and the not much beach, it has kind of affected productivity a little bit. And, you know, looking at the condition of the beach up there now, there probably might be a couple days where, you know, production is delayed or cannot occur due to, you know, high water conditions and high water and wave conditions. The New River Inlet Management Plan, I coordinated with the Dow Cordy a little bit last week, and the draft environmental impact statement does seem to be moving forward. And I'm not sure if the town, I guess we haven't had many meetings with, monthly meetings with Mickey or the rest of the Army Corps of Engineers, but possibly, you know, we probably should start that again just to make sure that the Army Corps of Engineers is kind of moving that forward.
Has Dow Cordy now submitted all the chapters that they were waiting on?
I do not know, but, you know, there has been, at least there's been some back and forth. I know they are working on it, and I know they are coordinating with Emily at the Corps.
Okay.
We can ask questions and move to another.
Yes.
Can I go now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've talked about Phase 1 timeline. We've talked about finishing Phase 5. You mentioned that Phase 4 is due to go, can begin in April?
That's, you know, scheduling-wise, we'd like to start it in April.
How much of an environmental window do we have left at that point, and are we going to get Phase 4 done?
No, that Phase 4 was never going to be finished this winter.
So we're going to get it started?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and then, yeah, with the Phase 5 beach nourishment, you know, the updated volumes daily, they are working Saturdays, and then, you know, just continue working with the town and the finance officer and D E C associates working on making sure the funding's all kind of taken care of, and then permitting coordination for all projects. In terms of, you know, kind of surveying, post-storm surveying, and I know, and Chris is going to talk about some of the more longer-term things, you know, there are a couple different options are, right now is to sand scraping, and the town does have an active sand scraping permit. Yes, exactly, Alderman Leonard. It is basically, it's, a lot of times, the beach will recover naturally, and you're just pretty much taking sand from the lower beach and moving it to the upper beach. You know, there's, there's not a whole lot of value in that because when you do move that sand up to the upper beach, the water and the waves can get a little farther up the beach and pretty much take that sand back and re-equip, you know, put the sand where they think it should be, where the waves in the water. So that's a tough one, but, I mean, that does, that does, that can kind of give, you know, some homeowners and things a little bit of reassurance. That is something we could do, you know, in the next couple months, sand scraping. It is, it's a difficult decision.
So Fran, can we back up a minute?
Yes.
So I believe what we're talking about right now is the winter storms.
Yes.
Right? And what you're suggesting is there are some areas of the beach that have definitely been impacted by the winter storms. I don't believe that we're able to submit any FEMA-type projects for these winter storms to be able to rebuild some of the dune damage. I just want to just clarify for everybody, right?
Correct, correct.
So this is a town expense, and so the areas that you're seeing the most impact, is it up in Phase 1 and Phase 2? Is that where you're seeing it?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're saying our most affordable option at this point, which gives more of a, you didn't use this word, but I'm going to, a cosmetic reassurance for the homeowners would be sand scraping?
Yes, and then putting that 20,000 cubic yards of material into that beach to let that sand kind of go up and down the beach and spread along the beach will help, and that will do, that will do, that will do, and that is planned, and that will help that area.
And if we increased to, and we talked about this as a board, and we had, we had stayed at the current limit for Phase 1 with the 20,000 cubic yards, I understand there's room in the permit there to expand that. If we did expand that, where would you suggest that be placed?
We could put it, we do have some expansion, you know, a little farther south of the St. Regis.
South, so still not all the way up?
Well, there is actually that area up just north of the Topsail Reef condos, too, that we, there is, there is room, and then the issue is getting the, and there would be truck-hauled sand, getting the truck, getting the sand on the beach, which is difficult now. They can, you know, get around, there are, they might have to work around high tides, but they could do that as well, and that could happen, you know, this, you know, the next few months. And it's tough, too, because the inlet area, they usually take the month of April off the chart, off the, because of shorebirds, the month of April is limited. Sometimes they'll let you work maybe two weeks into April, but the inlet area is tough because of the shorebirds.
So I think the most appropriate option, and certainly the board can weigh in if you'd like to, is to see some type of cost estimate with these two options.
Okay.
And what your recommendation would be, if we were able to increase the amount of sand we bring in, where would you recommend that it go for the biggest benefit to those residents? And then if we can't afford to do that, how much would sand scraping be, and where would you recommend that be done?
Okay.
And does everybody agree with that request?
I think there's a third option, and that's why I was very interested in the survey work that was done to see the limit of the dunes, and my observations, at least, and I live on the north end, half the dune is gone in many areas. And so from that survey work, and I was asking before the meeting started this morning, from the survey work, would it be an option or would it be a positive thing is to try to build the dune up, not the beach, to build the dune up where there's a significant loss of dune, because it's, like I said this morning, it's only going to take one major storm, and the rest of the dune's going to be gone in several areas. So I think that's the third option. Do we put sand in the dune, or we put sand on the beach?
That's kind of where my thought was going to a little bit, too, Mike. That's why I was asking if we were able to be reimbursed, as we have been in previous name storms, for dune work, so that's.
Right, and so, and then in terms of repairing things, this environmental window that we're in, I think those are the options. That, what you're kind of suggesting is a good option, and, you know, just basically, you know, a dune rehabilitation, like the town did post Florence, obviously, that was FEMA-funded, this one is not, but we could, you know, get that permit, and that is, you only, you only need a KAMA permit for that, you do not need an Army Corps of Engineers permit, since we're landward of the mean high, spring mean high water line. So that does speed things up, but then we still would have to probably, you know, bid that, and that would happen next season.
Not this season.
Right, so, and so some of these other things would probably happen next season, and we would heavily, you know, rely on, you know, basically, the beach is, you know, May, June, July, kind of that sand moving back and having some of that, some of that natural recovery, and then work on a more long-term fix of the dune and the beach system. And I think Chris Gibson is going to, you know, discuss that a little bit more, and I'll continue to coordinate with Chris to make sure that we're, you know, making, keeping.
Right, but if we work.
From your professional perspective, though, is it, from looking at everything, is there anything that you recommend that, what specifically do you recommend the board look at right now that could be done in this environmental window?
What, you know, getting that sand out there up near the, you know, the St. Regis. Yes.
The 20,000 cubic yards.
No, but he's suggesting possibly improve, increase the volume, is what he's suggesting, is possibly increase the volume.
That is, you know, we could, we could increase the volume. That is, you know, we, we could, we could increase the volume of, of placement up that, up in that area, uh, in kind of, you know, just, you know, to northeast of Topsail Reef Villas, we have permitted placement in, in, in hand. And then just south of, you know, Topsail Reef, down to the St. Regis, we have kind of permits in hand and we have, you know, contractors that, that have, can do the work in the next couple of months.
So the, the 20,000 that's, we have planned, um, but you have 75,000 permitted.
Yes.
So the difference between there would be what the, an option that the board would consider?
Yes, yes. And then we, that will be, you know, contractor dependent, but I, I do think we, we will for that. Uh, I, I, you know, I, I do think we can probably figure that out and that's, you know, that amount of material and with, with the contractor availability.
So Alice, so Alice, just to backtrack, I had asked Fran if he could that, get the board that, through you, the cost of increasing the amount of sand that we have right now scheduled to be delivered in Phase One or, and as his alternate option that he had mentioned would be sand scraping and I don't have a recent cost on that, so we would need those two costs.
And then if I can, just a couple of quick questions.
We could be done.
I've been waiting after Alice, so just carry on.
And Mr. Benson's waiting too.
Just real quick on the other thing, all the scheduling stuff with Mitchell's got to be in writing.
Okay.
That's a key part of that thing. We can't, we cannot have this again where he doesn't live up because a key part of that contract is him living up to that schedule and that's a default for him if he doesn't do that. So we need to make sure, yes, I'm playing lawyer, but that needs to be in writing or else we're going to be right in the same spot again. On the other stuff that we're talking about, big concern I've got is back of the envelope, Chris, if you're trying to do 50,000, how much is, how many millions is that?
Two.
Yeah, that's $2 million that we would pay for upfront. As long as it's something that is, something that we would otherwise do, but it also means we're not going to be asking for grants, we're not going to have outside funding for this, okay? All the options that we're looking at in 30-year plan about bringing in third-party money, okay, are off the table if we go down that route, correct?
Well, I would, I would mention though, and I, I guess my question would be to, you know, Fran, the grant that I mentioned for the Beach Vitex, um, that is also open to beach projects as well and we can submit multiple applications.
That's a good way.
So is that something?
Yes, that, that's completely, yes.
That you would be able to package and provide back to the, to the board as an option?
Right, but you're not going to know on that until after the, the window.
Right.
The stuff that we've got, what I'd like to see is what, almost like a picture for me, because I'm a visual learner, so here's where the area that we've got permits for, here's where the 20's going, what does that look like? So if I'm a homeowner on either side of that, okay, we had this discussion once because if you remember the, there was a little tiny gap in the Phase Four and Phase Five stuff and somebody said, oh, you're not going to connect them up and you're like, no, that's just the way the, the picture worked. To make sure that we understand, if I'm a homeowner and I'm north of where that permitting is, that's, that can't happen within that permitting window or I'm south of that, I think would be very helpful.
And Ben, that's what, I mean, I think, I think that that was clear in my request to Fran, what, what he, would he recommend we do and how much does it cost so then we can come back and take a look at it.
Right, but I'm seeing.
But I, but you also have to.
But a physical thing of where the permits are would be helpful.
But we also have to not talk about the 30-year plan because this is, he's talking critical beach issues right now and then Chris is going to talk about the big picture. So then, okay, Mayor Protem and then Tom.
Still, I'm coming back to my third option. You've only listed two, Mayor. My third option is to restore the dune. And if we're going to do that, we need that survey data that you've been looking at to tell us where we should be restoring the dune in Phases Really Two through Three because we know we're going to have sand in Phase Four coming up in the next year or so. Phase Five is done, so we got to worry about Phases Two and Three. And if we're going to put a grant into the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund, the window closes March eighth, so we got to have a number to know how much we should be asking for because our beach fund has a limited amount of money and so we need to have an estimate from you as to what we should be asking for if we're going to go with the grant route and restore the dunes.
Yep, and the grant route, just to be clear, would not be getting something done within the next couple of months.
Right.
So just to clarify.
But we could start on it as the point of the money.
Next year, next fall.
Alderman Leonard?
I heard dune scraping mentioned or whatever we're calling it these days, dune push, sea scraping, whatever. Um, not sure it's an option even worth considering and wasting time on because I can tell you for myself and I think I can probably speak somewhat to the person to my immediate right, neither one of us will prove that.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I see it as a colossal waste of time and, and really nothing more than a disruption to the, to the coastal shoreline and, and, and not worth, not worth the money. It's a waste of money. It's a waste of taxpayers' money. It looks good for a while and, and, and then the sand goes back where it was and we're right back where we started. We're not adding any sand to the system, we're just moving sand around.
And Mother Nature's going to move it back where she wants it.
So there's three that are going to vote against it, I think, right here.
And the other point is, uh, for the audience, is we did do a beach scrape under a previous administration.
Yep, we did.
And it didn't really do anything other than, it's a cosmetic look, oh yeah, it looks like we got sand, but in short time, it's going to be gone again.
So let's do this, let's, let's be.
Cosmetic, it's cosmetic, it really doesn't do much and it actually sometimes does more harm than good environmentally.
So let's do this to be conscientious of Fran's times two, then let's just work on the option as far as adding additional sand in that existing permit, where you would recommend it go and the costs associated with that. If you could get that back to Alice, then we can all discuss.
Can I ask a quick question on that? We've got a budget meeting that's coming up in a couple of weeks. If, if we, if we just, I don't know how long it's going to take him, but that's something we could actually add to the agenda, even though it's a budget section, right? So we could take, we can make a decision. Otherwise, we're waiting a month, we're waiting a month to make a decision on something.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to wait, I don't want to wait. So we, I, when Alice has it in hand, she can let us know the best way to move forward.
You can have a discussion meeting?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, that's fine.
Does the board have any additional questions for Fran?
I have one. Is there someone down in the Phase Five truck haul area actively supervising the, the efforts of Mr. Mitchell and his crew? And you know why I'm asking?
Yes, yes, uh, yes. We, uh, the town manager did speak with, there's a representative for CM, Mitchell, and then when, one of Chris Gibson's guys, who's, he's really good, uh, he is the daily surveyor guy and he, he is going to, you know, be looking at that specifically, those specific items, you know, every time he's there.
Historically, we've always had someone on site when we've done a beach project, whether it was a truck haul.
Okay.
Or even going all the way back to when we did the dig in Phase One of the New River Inlet and there's somebody down there from the engineering firm, making sure things are being done right and things are not being damaged or destroyed.
Yes.
And it, it popped up over the weekend, I'm sure everybody saw it, and, and I want to make sure that it's understood.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, the old, the old saying, you know, inspect what you expect, okay, is, is where we're at here. We need somebody down there between, I don't know if, if he's subbed to you or what, but, you know, that the engineering firm has a responsibility to this town to ensure that things are done correctly and if damage is created, that is, is documented and that the contractor's then held liable to repair.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
And, and we can't waver on this. And we're talking steps and signs and everything else, okay?
Can I speak, please, just a second?
Sure.
Scott finishes my, my eight years on site doing surveys every day. He's been instructed since the stuff that happened, every day, in his daily report that he gives, the survey, and, and he gives a daily report on, on the activity, that any kind of damage is happening or anything that happens there, Greg Street will be documented on a daily basis.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
And that goes to Alice. I believe you get that on a daily basis from us, so anything will be reflected.
Okay. And then just for those folks in the audience, we do have some additional beach updates coming up and then we also have another, um, session where it's open forum and you can speak. So I'd like to get through all of that first because you might have more questions as we go. All right, thank you, Fran. The next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then we're going to move right on to continuing business and we're going to ask for a BISAC update from Mr. Strather.
Good afternoon. The, I'm Larry Strather and I'm the Chair of the BISAC Committee for the Town on Ortopsail Beach. Uh, I'm giving a report on our last meeting, which was January the 16th of '24. Uh, I'm going to briefly get through this, so we, we, we had a manager's update from Manager Darian, pretty much was, we went over what you've heard this morning from her, so I won't reiterate that. Uh, we talked about, uh, Member Benson talked about the revised rules of the, uh, committee organization terms and process for reappointment. And, uh, so we went over that with our members and we, uh, had three members whose terms were expiring, uh, this year. Uh, we also talked about our 2024 meeting schedule. We have met on the third Tuesday of each month, uh, herefore, and we are going to do that at least through June of this year. There's no meeting in July, so in June we'll make a decision on whether we'll continue monthly or whether we feel like that bi-monthly will, will work. It depends on what happens, uh, over the next six months as to how often we have to meet. Uh, the, uh, Member Benson said he thought it was good for the committee to discuss some possibilities for the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund and so we had conversations about that and we talked about issues and we agreed to, uh, discuss with the engineer about several things involving that. So that's pretty much just something we're in process of doing. Uh, we then began to discuss again and, and what we've discussed for the last almost two years, uh, our proposed five-year action plan and, and our 30-year plan, maintenance plan. Uh, we, uh, the committee had conversations about the plan and the progress that had been made and where our next step was. We, we, we beat it to death and we, the last few meetings, we've felt like that we just got deeper and deeper and that we were basically to the point that we needed you to take a look at it and determine whether it's, uh, what questions you have, what concerns that you might have and, and get it closer to being an approved plan so that we could really get started and move forward with it. Uh, so I, I did a, I did a dog and pony show for a, a brief overview of the plan one more time. Uh, we discussed it again and at that time then a motion was made and seconded that, that this presentation and discussion of the, come to the Board of Alderman and have Chris here to, uh, Chris Gibson of T.I. Coastal here to present and answer any questions about the plan and it was unanimously approved. And so we have, uh, that is how we got him on the agenda for now. Our next meeting is February the 20th, uh, at 10:30. Uh, we are, uh, I'm, well, can I call Chris up or you're going to have to do it? Okay, well, I just wanted you to know that I, I would either, I would like to have a, a brief moment, once Chris finishes his presentation, to discuss what we'd like to see happen, uh, from this point, okay?
I told Larry I would weigh in, just to give the board some context. BISAC is not asking for approval of a 30-year plan today, okay? This is about, we did not, as a committee, want to send something kind of as, it's already cooked and done. So this is, this is a first impression type of thing for the board to look at, all right?
So no motion required.
Don't be any motion. I think the key today, and we talked about it, is one of the things that's key in this whole thing is to get the permits in place. And if you think about what happened in Phase Four, the permits were in place, we got the grant, we moved forward. So we want to be able to act on, on things. So we have the money and the budget to do things, which we can talk about if you want, but I think the one thing we're trying to look for as a committee is if we can get the permitting started because every month that goes by without process, starting the permitting process for these projects is another month that's lost.
Plus, we can't get, I mean, if, if we're going to be looking for grants, uh, if we've already got our permits in place, I mean, that's the only reason, or one of the reasons we got that 10 and a half million dollars that we got, uh, was because we had permits in place that we could go ahead and immediately use that money. And, and so we would, I don't know, we don't know how long it, it may take, uh, you, you to, to the board, uh, to, to approve the plan because there's a lot in it and there's a lot of discussion probably needs to be had. But if we can, if we can go ahead and get the, the, get, get the approval to get the permitting started, then when you do finally get the plan approved, we can go ahead and then start looking for funds.
And just, just real quick as a follow-up on that, I mentioned to a couple of you, under the budget for this year, under future project funds under the beach plan, we've got a million two sitting there that we haven't spent any of. And to me, future projects is getting the permitting together for the future, you got to start with the permitting, so the whole idea today is just to.
We're all going to come out of there. We also have an issue right now, and I've heard a couple of times, but not consistently, where KAMA will say that we do not have an approved 30-year beach plan. So we do need to get something on the books. We still have a static line somehow, but we evidently do not have, in their opinion, what is a 30-year beach plan, so that we need to do something.
And we really believe, I mean, the, the BISAC committee, we've, we've been over it and over it and over it and been just hours and hours of conversation with it and Chris has been back and changed things and come back and forth and, and we really feel like that, and, and, and of course, fresh eyes and ears are always good because it may be questions that we didn't think about, but we've covered just a lot of stuff, so we, we do hope that, uh, that you'll, you'll do this. Is any questions to me before you?
No, sir.
Yeah, the big thing was just to get feedback from the board and then a final plan in front of us as soon as possible to do a 30-year beach plan, sir.
Okay.
So are you looking for a motion today to approve the permitting?
No, well.
It's in the budget, so I don't think we need to.
I, I don't know about that, that's, that's a board issue. We, we would like to have something that allows us to be able to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, we, so let's let Chris do his presentation because we can't just make a blanket statement where we're going to just approve a million dollars' worth of permits. We need to.
How about we just have Chris come up and go through the beach plan right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris, your turn. Welcome, Chris Gibson.
Yeah, I'm going to stand, how about that? Uh, I'm a one-legged man in a kicking contest. Thank y'all for having me today. Um, uh, let's see if I can get my thing.
Can you see what you're presenting?
I've got it on my phone, so, um.
You want to turn it around a little bit?
Can, can we, can we turn that just a hair? As long as that's not going to kill everybody, it'd be great. I, I can do that, that's good.
Yeah, anybody need bifocals for that?
So what we've been working on at, at the BISAC is looking, again, the town is looking to do a long-term 30-year plan to how we, how we look at managing this financially, the entire beach, uh, from, from town line all the way up to New River Inlet. Um, one of the things that we've realized as we've done this is we need to look immediately because we've got areas that we've been talking about since 2002 that haven't had anything done in them and we've been talking about it for 20 years. So how do we get to that point where we could have everybody have gotten something and be prepared, should we have an event, um, that, that we're able to get FEMA funding? So we've come up with a strategy over the next couple of years to finish out Areas Two and Three, rebuild, uh, Area One and, uh, move forward with that. So next slide, please. Did I skip? So these are, uh, uh, one of the things, this, this particular slide is just a simple thing. We've been calling them phases for forever. That, that really indicated an order of things which was planned. It was actually 1, 2, 4, 3, 5 was the way the phases were set up originally. So we've kind of talked about it more geographically now. Uh, in judging terms, we use the word reach, so I just wanted to say that if you hear me say reach one, I'm talking about what you would consider Phase One, but I don't want to take, have that phasing moniker because we're kind of past that point. Um, next slide. So what are our plan goals? Um, maybe it's going to be easier for me to read here. Um, sorry. Uh, one is to provide nourishment and shoreline stabilization townwide within the next three to five years. Um, we've got places, again, we're in a reactive situation with Two, Three and, and One is constantly a reactive situation now. We'd like to get it where it's more proactive and, and a managed state. To get the entire town to meet the engineered beach, uh, requirements, um, so that we can get FEMA funding. There's always been questions about the Cobra Zone and FEMA funding, but if you remember, after Florence, y'all got FEMA funding within the Cobra Zone. So it's, it's new work that can't be done. FEMA is reimbursement for repairs to existing work. Different, different thing there. So on, when you're considered an engineered beach, when you have a declared disaster in your county, I believe it's $13 million in damage countywide is what kicks the number over, then you can get reimbursement for doing restoration to your beach project through FEMA. It's a reimbursable grant. In North Carolina, it's paid 100%. It only reimburses for sand lost in that event only. It's not going to pay to do your regular maintenance. You have to deduct any kind of erosion that you would have since your last project over the years that, between your last project and this event. Even within that particular year, you have to deduct out any erosion in this year. So what you, what we typically have been doing for you guys historically, we do surveys in the July timeframe, so it's right before hurricane season starts. And then if you have an event, Topsil Island, we usually come in and we're doing, right after the survey, right after the storm, we're doing surveys of this entire island for the, for the three towns within a few days of the storm. So you have a very focused, we lost exactly 312,000 yards or 1.2 million or whatever it is. One of the things that you manage your, your beach project that we really want to work on in the design, too, is making as many properties as we can within the community conforming to the KAMA setback laws. Just having a beach is great, but you still really want to make sure that you have enough dune structure, enough vegetation, et cetera, so that houses that may get damaged either in a hurricane or by fire or anything else can be rebuilt. One of the things that we've accomplished in Topsil Beach, every structure in the town is now conforming. There is not a single non-conforming structure in Topsil Beach now. There's still some that are restricted because we have not asked for the static line to be removed yet because we're doing a longer-term plan there. But everyone has at least 60 feet of setback from the vegetation, if not more. With the FEMA thing and with the state, you have to have a long-term plan. FEMA doesn't allow pot shots. You know, you can't just do a project and walk away from it and then ask them for something. You have to have a plan for maintaining it. So obviously with what we're doing here, we want to have a long-term plan, a long-term fiscally maintainable program. And we also want to look at how we do some of the practices, construction-wise, beach management practices. The dune does not start, I mean, the, the beach does not start at the front of the dune. It starts at the back. You've got to protect the whole system, and that needs to be done through town ordinances, town zoning, currently doing things at Topsil Beach right now to, as we get rid of the static line, to actually fix the, the construction line that, that doesn't allow building further forward than it is, even though some houses have 150 feet of vegetation in front of them. We don't want them encroaching onto what would be a sacrificial dune or that type of structure. Next slide, please. So as we're looking forward, we've kind of looked at what's the volume needs, and this goes back in part to what was the original plan, and that continues to be relatively viable. We're looking anywhere between 50 and 75 cubic yards per linear foot through the length of One, Two, and Three. We have that quantity of material. We did some research for you guys. It's been 20 years ago. I can't believe it's been 20 years. But we do have a source to accomplish that and to accomplish all of One, Two, and Three in one project in one season.
Chris, on that slide?
Yes.
One question. I see that you have the groin drawn in there.
This was, this, this was actually not, that's not the groin. This is an old slide from CPD. That was actually the channel dredging from...
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that your recommendations in this plan didn't, didn't assume that that was in place.
That is not assuming that that is in place. There are some things similar to that that I'm going to be talking about that we're going to attempt and to try to keep, and to try to make sure that we don't cause a navigation issue by doing the beach renourishment project. Can you kind of slip through these maps because I think everybody kind of knows the maps? Reach One, Two, Three, and Four. I got a little dyslexic on Reach Four with my volume. It's 305, not 350. I saw that on Franz earlier. But these are the areas that we're talking about doing. So basically, Four and Truck Hall is going to come up to the bridge, and then everything north of the bridge from the source we have at DA 143, we have about, we have enough material for that and about 20% overage for margin of error.
Chris, just to clarify, I think what you have pulled up now is different. The slides are different than what we had previously. So if you could send me whatever you've got updated...
Yeah, I've added it and added some slides into this presentation. I didn't know I was supposed to do the one from December, but I used it to kind of go off of.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I made a little bit different presentation. But I would, I've, Rick's, Rick's got this one, and I'll make sure you have it as well.
Okay.
All right, so... Next slide, please. And that's where Phase Five is. Great, next slide. So the source, so back in 2003, 2004, when I was with another company and another life, we looked at this DA 143 for the town as far as using it as a bar source. This has been done up and down Figurite Island we've done in the past, harvested an island there for beach renourishment. We've done two for Topsil Beach. We're seeing this up and down the coast. Paulies Island right now is, just went out to bid last week for doing this kind of work to actually reuse this material that came off of the beach, wound up in the waterway, and got put in an island back there and isn't being used. So while the work that we did 20 years ago has timed out as far as from a regulatory perspective, I'm still pretty certain, certain that that 40-foot-high island is the same way it was 20 years ago. Within it is about 1.9 million yards of beach-quality sand that we found out of about 3 million yards on the island. It's a rela, it's relatively easy to permit because it's all a disturbed area, and we're dealing straight with the, on the beach side, it's a, it's a straight pump deal. So it's, we're dealing with SARBO, which is the South Atlantic Regional Biological Opinion. So a lot of the environmental work is not as intense as other things. And it is sufficient for all of Reaches One, Two, and Three. The other nifty thing was HB 600, which was House Bill 600 at the state level this past year, made citing or constructing disposal areas for future use, which there is a need here by the Corps of Engineers as well as locals eligible for the shallow draft inlet fund. So being able to, to take this sand off and rehabilitate that as a disposal island under the current rules actually qualifies it for the three-to-one match. There's also some opportunities, as this is probably two to three years out, to get some direct legislative money. And there's a little clause that's still stuck around through HB 600 that certain grants, for some reason, North Topsil Beach, unlike other communities, doesn't have to do matching on certain types of grants. So there's some ability there to get some, some free money to do this. So there's also, I've discussed with the Corps a couple of times, they've got a, they've got a $5 million study that's ongoing to look at six disposalary rehabilitations up and down the coast. They said they were going to look at DA 143. I tried to talk to them about schedule and they, it's so far out that it's really trying to coordinate with them and actually get them to pay for some of the investigations. The, the time is more important than, than the money in, in reality when you're talking about how much they would, they would likely spend. So kind of moved on from that. But there is, there is, I will say that it makes it easier to get the sand off of the island because the Corps is actually looking at how do I get the sand off the island? All right, so one, next slide, please. So here's an interesting idea. We've got still several years to go before the terminal groin gets put in place. One of the thing that we have seen over the years is that when sand is put on the north end, it immediately goes back in the inlet, and it immediately goes back into the intercoastal waterway. And so there would be, one concern is that by, by taking sand not out of the channel but out of this island and overloading Reach One, that we could potentially cause some navigation issue within the inlet as that sand went back. So one of the things that I'm going to, I would like to propose as we go through this permitting process...
Before you do that, Chris, and then if we did that, haven't you seen instances where towns did that and then were liable for it?
Well, that's, that is, that is one of the reasons. Because when you're doing something this close to a navigation channel, the Corps will do what's called a Section 408 study, 408, right? So they do a Section 408 and determine if your project impacts their navigational O and M spending. If they, if you impact that, they will put that responsibility on you. For Mason's Inlet, which was, has been going on for 20, 20-some years now, Mason Inlet, they determined that dredging that would be an impact to the intercoastal waterway, and there's approximately 3,000 feet of intercoastal waterway that is a high shoaling area that New River County has had to maintain instead of the federal government since 2002. So one of the things we don't want to do is cause that, cause that kind of issue by overloading the system. So something I'm proposing as we go through this, one of the things we did at Mason's Inlet back in the day, when we opened that inlet, we put in temporary sheet pile to control how the inlet opened. It was really slick. It was actually, it worked so well that when they dredged the inlet, they actually dredged it with trucks and excavators down to minus 12, 50 feet from the ocean. They were down in the hole. And what they did was they put sheet pile shore parallel and then had wing walls on it. And then when it was time to open the inlet up at an incoming tide, they pulled the sheets out. And the whole thing came out in like 12 hours. It was 600 and some feet of sheet pile came out in 12 hours. So what I'm going to recommend and try to permit is one of our construction logistics is that we put in a similar structure here temporarily to hold the sand from going back into the inlet and causing a navigation issue. And that is, if it's an environmental issue, it's easily remediated by pulling it. It'll give us data from an environmental perspective prior to putting in the terminal groin. It'll give us additional data there and allow us to potentially, you know, work forward as a means up at the north end and have that to be more manageable. I mean, as we've seen with the Corps projects, when you look north of the reefs, when you put sand up there, it is gone in a flash. That flood shoal that runs right along, you can see there where the, the red line I put across it, that flood shoal there, the current rips through there so bad between the shrimp boat and shore that virtually anything you put there is, is flying back to the waterway. It's, it's mainlining sand backwards. So for us to have a real success at the north end, it's going to have to, there's something that's going to have to be done to hold that and block off this flood channel.
Recognizing as a temporary structure, would it perform some of the benefits of a groin by holding sand in there?
It would, it would, it, yes, that is correct. And it would be a, 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 a quick, I'd say, quick and easy way to do a longer-term thing. It's not, it's, it's not something that would have a lifespan of 50 or 100 years like a terminal groin would, but it certainly could get the job done for a couple of years and protect you from having other financial incurrences and to reduce the cost and management at the north end. What, the hope is that we can permit this, and they will see that as a construction logistic and that we have the ability to take it out easily so that it's, it's part...
Andrew, when you say a couple of years, these things, I've seen these construction sites. It's a fascinating topic.
It is a topic, yeah.
Or basically what you're doing, some of those things have been there for temporary, for 10 or 20 years.
It, it, this is more, this is a more temporary solution and easier to remove than sandbags. Yes. So slide on to the, the next one. So let's, let's talk about design schedule. So we completed the concept plan and presented the BISAC back in December for our long-term plan, 30-year plan, and I will talk more about that as we go on. Realistically, the, the length of time that it's going to take to get the 30-year, because there's, there's a whole bunch of moving parts in Reach One, we're recommending that we do a standalone permit for Reaches One, Two, and Three to look at that just as a beach project and then longer-term management as a separate entity. We've got to develop some long-term sand sources. This is, this island is a one-and-done. So it's a one-time source, can't go back. It's basically just like a mine. Once the mine's empty, it's empty. There's not a whole lot of refurbishment. I suspect the Corps of Engineers will use it for the waterway some in the future, but that's such a long time before we get this kind of volume built up. You're talking 40, 50 years before it's reusable. So we've got to look at long-term sand development, long-term sources. I think that once we get through some of these particular issues that we have at, at the very north end, the inlet and Suda Bush Cut can be used as a source, as well as looking at some of the sources that were made available by Topsil Beach not doing their 50-year project. What's called Borough Area A down there has enough sand in it to do some of the long-term needs that y'all would have down in Reaches Four and Five, and it's inside of the three-mile limit, so you don't have to deal with bone looking at that. And that is a site that basically was given up and not needed by Topsil Beach. You know, we're looking at completion of Reaches One, Two, and Three to actual construction somewhere in FY '26. And at that time, we would have an engineered beach from town line to tip. And, you know, that's, that's in a reasonable timeframe. And the thing is, right now with the grants that we believe are available and what we believe you can do through legislative commitments in the FY '25 budget, we believe that you can do this without borrowing money. So, so looking at, next slide, please. Construction schedule as we've got going on. We're looking at FY '24 right now. We're working on Phase Five. FY '25, completing Phase Four. And then looking at doing, in FY '26, doing Reaches One, Two, and Three. Hopefully, in '26, we get the temporary terminal structure in. And then if you're looking long-term, initial inlet improvements and maintenance up in One and Two and Three, somewhere out in FY '29. We would look at cycling that inlet, renourishment out of there, and this is looking at the 30-year plan, looking at, at cycling in the inlet about every four years. And then in between, something that we can do to aid Four and Five is the Miss Katie, which is a small hopper that Dare County did. Looking at using that to hit some bumps that develop within New River Inlet and then taking that sand and doing extreme near-shore placement so that you're actually placing it in the bar system and it can migrate onto beach, onto the beach during the summer season. That's a relatively low-cost type of thing to do. Again, all of these that we're looking at here so far would be under shallow draft navigation fund, and you would only be looking at 25% of the bill. The SDNF would be covering the other 75. Somewhere down, that we're estimating out somewhere on the 10-year window is when you would really need to redo a large portion of Four and Five. This all bars any major storm events. This is just looking at regular schedule. FEMA is our buddy for the, for the stuff happening intermittent. You'd be looking at a large-scale hopper project to do, redo Four and Five somewhere out in FY '32, and then cycle that about every 10 years for the hopper project. Funding opportunities, next slide, please. So funding opportunities. DA 143 is available for the shallow draft fund. It's a three-to-one match. Anything that we do out of New River Inlet is navigation-related, three-to-one match. Beach resiliency fund, this is what we're talking about, like we did in Reach Four. That's a state one-to-one match, so anything that we had to do Truck Hall or Hopper dredge would be looking at, at that. Direct legislated state grants. I've talked to Kevin Hart a good bit, who does most of the water quality grants, and he suggested, not only for stuff that we're doing at Topsil, but also up here, that there is a, there is a definite possibility for direct legislated grants directly to you and that we should be applying our state representatives and state senators for this area to do that. Again, if we're looking at '26, we've got FY '25 budget coming up, so we've got it, we've got a... State FY '25, when they do the budget every two years. So we've got time to start doing what we've got to do politically to try to get some of those grants in place. We have FEMA assistance that's available after declared disasters. We have FEMA assistance that's available after declared disasters. And again, that's a hundred percent coverage for anything that's in the declared disaster. And then we would look, if we're doing repair, to also go ahead at that time and update what we'd lost to that period because we have dredges or whatever type of equipment here. And so, we'd move forward with that. And again, there's other county, state, federal opportunities that we'll constantly look for. There's been some recent monies that came out of the Fed side, some grant opportunities. You know, you're competing nationally at that level, so it's a little tougher. Working with remachacy tax and those sort of things with the county, all of those things can be worked on. But there are enough funding opportunities identified already to carry the long-term plan without having to change the current tax rate. So, that's, that's where we're at just in this early draft. Next slide. Next slide is a big spreadsheet that's better for me to give y'all this presentation and that y'all to look at because it's a lot of small numbers. But basically, it lays out over the next thirty years what the expenditures would be, that you've got these expenditures coming up with four, with the, the next two years with, with Four and Five, what we'd be looking at to do Areas One, Two, and Three and Twenty-Six. And then kind of the annual outlay that would be happening as well as the grants that we would expect to be coming in simultaneously so that we could move forward with this. When we put all this together, it came out, it made sense. And at the end of it, when we looked at depreciating what was coming into locally, coming into your beach fund through your ad valorem and what was going out, we wound up with a positive number at the end of thirty years. So, assuming that we move up with those amounts coming in with inflation, because all of these numbers are kind of fixed numbers, time value money, it's a wonky thing. It's easy to get, it's easy to go crazy with that. But as long as the income keeps up with inflation, this should, this should all work out. Next slide. And so, if we were going to get started, this is what we, for the Sections One, Two, and Three and using DA one forty-three, this is kind of what we think to do in order to be ready for twenty-six. We would need to go in and do the geotechnical analysis of the island again. That's, uh, and do, make sure, and redo the surveys for the topography. Most of this cost that's here at three hundred thousand dollars is in the, in the geotech. With what we're doing, we would be doing cores that are about sixty feet long. It would be a pneumatic push, so a three, we still have to do a three-inch diameter tube like a Vibrocore. It's not a cheap thing to do. We have to barge the equipment over, so we've got to pay barge stuff and all that. So, it's, it's a little bit, it's more expensive than some of the normal geotech because of the island location. And then looking at engineering and design of both the borrow area, because it's a little complex, we know we can't just dredge into the side of it because it's stump sound. And this island was built on top of the stump sound marsh. So, there's some nifty tricky things that need to be done in order to harvest this island. And there's not very many engineers that have done this and, that have gone in and done this in the country where you've gone in and not been able to dig into one but had to go up and do all of that. Marty Snow recently retired and I'm the other one. So, um, so, um, but looking at that, that would be the design for all of that. We would look in, in the beach design, looking at how much dune we put in to try to make that, get that vegetative state so that we get things, houses conforming, how much beach we put in to protect that dune. All of those things would be looked at and, and analyzed and laid out. We believe that we could do that if, if we were tasked with it, we could get that done within FY twenty-four. I know you guys, June thirtieth, it flips over. I think we could do that by then. And then you're looking at doing the environmental analysis, the permit, the grant applications would be happening between now and the, and the fall. And then you've.
Just real quick before you leave that, though, from a timing standpoint, you know, we're approving stuff. If, okay, on the twenty-five stuff, you're talking about July first to go. There's nothing, if, for example, we said, oh, we're going to approve the four fifty at the top and then wait for next year. My concern is, I don't, if, if you could start the bottom stuff earlier, I'd rather have the approval go forward to get all the permitting done, okay? And then if we have a carryover to next year, I don't know what the consensus of the board is, but I don't want to short this thing and they have to come back in and find out we couldn't start a permitting process. So, what, what you're saying is to get all the permitting done this calendar year, that's the number.
This is the number for, for getting this done this calendar year.
And having the permits in place.
And, 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 well, the permits would, would be filed. We're still going to have a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty, two hundred and forty days, something like that, after we get it all filed for everybody to look at it. There will definitely be with what we're talking about with the temporary structure, there's going to be some negotiation that's going to go back and forth for a couple of months.
But my point, though, is I don't want to, I, I would rather have, my recommendation to the board would be, we approve what he needs to get this done and then try to get a schedule, the fastest schedule. I just don't want to lose windows on things because, you know, oh, we didn't have that approved. We can't start now, it's in June, we have to wait till August. So.
Right.
Which you're saying, this is your current schedule, but that's the total money that you're looking for in this calendar year.
Correct. Knowing that, knowing that you've got a, an FY split in the middle of it.
Alice, you missed that Rick wants you to write a check now.
For sixty-seven dollars, that's all.
No, but I think that's the motion I'm going to make.
I thought you'd find that interesting since you walked out the door.
She didn't want to hear all that big number.
So, so with all of this, this is kind of what we've got laid out. And the next slide, this is questions, so I, I'm open for any.
I mean, I, I have one question, which is probably on some of the other board members' minds who live up. I'm not in Phase One, but other board members are. So, if we followed that high-level schedule that you had up there and you started to place the sand on the beach in, because I'm going to have an engineered beach all the way through town in FY twenty-six, I wrote that down.
Okay, that's what we're shooting for.
So, would you start with that temporary structure so they'd be that first area to get sand? Like, how logistically does that work?
That, that's a great question. Can we bring up a large-scale map here? Go back to one of the very early slides when they had all five reaches.
Probably the very first.
Very first, very, keep going.
It's like this slide after you cover.
One more. One more. Nope, nope, one more. Is there one more? There, nope.
There it is.
Keep, keep going.
It's the second slide.
Second, it was the second slide in. There we go. Okay, I'm going to come up here and point, and I'm sorry for the folks in the audience.
Don't knock yourself out.
So, what we're looking at is right in here toward the, I think it's right here in Reach Three. There's where the power lines are, right?
Yes, Marina Way.
Right. So, what we would do is we'd actually run the pipeline down the waterway because it's easier and cheaper to put pipeline down the waterway than it is to put it down the beach and bring all that shore pipe. So, we would come down to Marina Way, come across the island there. At the power lines, there's actually one of your bridges, so you don't, the road crossing is slotted under. There's an empty lot there, too.
Nice.
So, all of that's nice and slick. If you're looking at putting in a land booster, that could easily go in the power line easement. If they can get another booster, that could go in the waterway. That way, there's nothing that the weather is going to impact. We would go south and tie into Phase Four to start with and then flip and go north up toward Phase One. That way, all of the excess, what we had is the margin of air sand, which is about two hundred thousand yards. We've got that to fatten up when we get, go up to the north. At the end, you would put in the retaining structure because it's much cheaper to put it in in the dry than it is to put it in wet.
Okay.
So, you build out the sand and then you, you start popping it in just as soon as you start doing that. And it all finishes up right there together.
So, where Marina Way is, that there is a power line and utility easement that goes all the way down to the ICW, but it is privately owned.
I knew that.
Okay, so we would just have to work with that owner who, she's very cooperative with the town and.
We would have to work with them for easements, but I figured that would be a lot easier than bringing in twenty-five thousand feet of shore pipe and giving that on and off out of New River.
No, and she's very cooperative and very supportive of the, of the, of the town, I think, just talking with her.
You're talking about a permanent sleeve to be able to use in the future to be able to do sand.
Well, I'm talking, I'm talking just about getting, if you look at it like we're going from one end of Topsail to the other, there's twenty-five thousand feet of pipe that's on the beach. Not only do you have to get it onto the beach somehow, you've got to get it off the beach somehow.
And so, you just leave it.
Where, where with this, you put it down the waterway and when you're done, you blow air in the pipe, float it up, tie it behind the tug, and tow it home.
Okay.
No creativity there.
So, looking at, looking at those, those are, those are the things when we're looking at the long-term, the, the design and why the design is even as high as it is, is because there are these other, these particular creative things of how we're going to do, get the dredge into the site where it's dry and keep it in a pond the whole time without it sucking all the water out of it. Those are really logistical things that you really have to think about how to do that and how to design it and how to make it palatable for a contractor.
Okay.
And at the same time, keep the town protected and all of that. So, it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky business. But this is, like I said, this is something we have experience with. We have experience with it locally because we, we went into islands like this at Topsail when we did that project ten years ago. I also worked on a project called Hart Miller Island up in Baltimore. And that's where we got the idea from Topsail was we went up into the top of Hart Miller Island and made, made duck ponds after they closed out that disposal site. But we actually towed a dredge fifty feet up in elevation, pulled it up with dozers, dug ponds up in the top, made all sorts of wetlands amenities, pretty cool.
So, does anybody have any questions for Chris on the board?
Can I, can I follow up on something that you asked about? I, I thought we technically had a thirty-year beach plan in place.
So did I.
Okay. So, my question is, and there, I think your point was, there are benefits to having that in place in terms of what goes on. So, are we, have we, for our purposes, we're amending that? I mean, what I'm concerned about is I don't want to wait five years to get a thirty-year plan and if we're losing the benefits.
What I've heard, and Chris may have, he may have heard differently, what I've been told is that for some reason, and it really just, just came out of the blue, is that our thirty-year beach plan is not state-approved by DCM.
So, here's, here's the dealio. The thirty-year beach plan, okay, let's, let's, let's go back with the history. What you have, it's all about the static line. So, used to, what would happen, you do a beach project, if you did more than fifty yards a foot, bam, you got a static line, houses can never, you know, they can never go any farther forward after that, regardless of how much vegetation goes. If you wanted to get rid of that static line, you had a thirty, you had a long-term management plan in place. You present that to the state, they, they approve it, they say, okay, you've got enough financial fortitude to do everything. We'll take the static line away.
Got you, okay.
Okay, so.
That makes sense to me now.
And so, that's where it is. So, what, what they've done, and this goes back to Mason's Inlet that Fran and I worked on years ago, that was the first long-term permit that was given in North Carolina at either a state or federal level. We did a thirty-year plan on that one. And that has become kind of the way to go. The state wants to make it so that we're going to, to approve your thirty-year plan. With that, we're going to give you permits to do beach re-nourishment for ten years. And then after ten years, if you're successful and you continue managing it, then we're going to open it up for the next twenty, so you don't have to keep coming back to us project by project. That is a new thing with the state and something y'all haven't even been through that process at all. We're doing the same thing, even though we had a thirty-year plan at Topsail, we're doing and revising that. And part of it goes with what you've completed, the original long-term program you had with all the phases, that kind of went out the window a long time ago. So, we're needing to, you're needing to re-up that and to get back on the page where you are now.
That makes sense, thank you, Chris.
And then just one, one quick clarification. When everybody saw those big numbers up there, even when it comes to us, if he's saying to us, this is the plan, funding will impact that dramatically. Like, you know, we got the Phase Four thing, so that got done immediately, but if a grant gets delayed six months, so it's a, it's a blueprint, okay, to move forward. And as, as we gain grants and other things, that moves different ways. Is that a fair way to put it?
That's, that's a fair way to put it. And some of the things, we're having, we're having conversations with DEQ because we're finally getting to the point, especially with the shallow draft fund and also with the monies that they're putting into the, the beach fund, as they're calling it, the ten million dollars that pops up about every other year, is looking at ways where the towns can go ahead and have the money, what's the right word?
Allocated.
Allocated, not escrowed. But, but you're allocating out of those funds on an annual basis. So, all of a sudden, you don't have three towns pop up that want to do thirty-million-dollar projects on the same year. And whoops, sorry, there's not enough money for everybody, somebody has to wait. So, we're, we're trying to work with them to get all of these projects that are happening to have long-term annual allocations to them.
Okay. All right, yes, Alderman Leonard.
I have some comments. Will Evans and I, who's in the audience, sat in this room probably fifteen years ago on something called the Beach Erosion Study Team, scratching our heads along with several other town residents on, on how to get, how to get the beaches done here. In fact, I think the term we used, and I kind of like to favor, is shoreline protection rather than a beach plan because it, we're really trying to protect the shoreline because by protecting the shoreline, you protect property and infrastructure. And, and semantics, I know, but, but sometimes I think those words are very important. But I, I'm very impressed with this.
Thank you.
I'm curious as to why we would not call the Reaches Areas One through Five instead to just make it simpler.
We call them areas, that's, that works for me.
I mean, it's up to you.
That, that is fine. I just, I just felt that.
Against semantics.
Yeah, I thought the phasing language just needed to be put out because it's no longer a timing thing. But we can call them areas, that works.
Well, yeah, it was never, you know, my understanding, I wasn't on the board when it happened, but I used to sit in the audience. The phases, I think, came about in the early two thousands. And it wasn't so much that they were going to be done in that order, like you said. But the town realized that there was no way to do it all at once and they were broken down into the five phases. Some of it was geographical. Clearly, Phase Five was federal versus non. And then the next one up, you know, was, was right there at New River Inlet Road. But they were broken that way to make them more financially attainable. You can't do the whole thing, you could do it a phase at a time.
Tom, wasn't there something about the end is separated if you wanted to do specific taxes?
Well, that was, that was something completely different, though, that that was, that did lend itself into if you wanted to establish a municipal service district, which, which I think we should stay away from, but that's a different argument. But I, I'm very impressed with what you've done here, Chris.
Thank you. And also, one of your things was, there were some environmental reasons for the breakup, too. I think Four had some near-shore hard bottoms, so there was some grain size things that were put into there. But yeah, it was, it was geographic and financial and who would be cost-sharing? There wasn't the same kind of cost-sharing mechanisms. It was just, it was just federal or, or on your own back then, so.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah. I'm very optimistic. I think it's, the BISAC group, as Chairman Struthers mentioned, it's his preamble that we have worked over like six months or more trying to develop this plan to bring it before the board and the town. I think it's a good plan. It's a novel plan, choosing some, an approach that hadn't been thought about before but makes a lot of sense to us because it accomplishes two things, particularly with the use of DA one forty-three as a sand source. So, I'm very supportive of it, obviously. But I do have a technical question on future maintenance once we get past DA one forty-three.
Okay.
New River Inlet has an authorized depth of six feet plus or minus two feet. It's one of the shallowest in, shallow draft inlets in the state of North Carolina, to my knowledge. Most of them are eight feet.
It's the shallowest in the country.
But I learned recently, talking to the folks in Topsail Beach with their project, Topsail Inlet is eighteen feet authorized.
Not true.
So, their permit is to eighteen feet.
Our permit is to eighteen, it's sixteen plus two, but the federal authorization is only eight plus two.
So, it's possible to get a permit for a greater depth if you're dredging the inlet, even though it's only authorized at six plus two.
Dredge boaters call it advanced maintenance. And part of the, part of the reason, part of the reason is so that, one, you can use the size equipment that is necessary to dredge in the ocean because you're not going to find, I, I'm surprised how shallow the Delaware is digging at times down in, in Topsail. They're able to dig at times as shallow as fourteen. But most of the dredges, when they're in the ocean, they draw fourteen. So, fourteen-low water is what they need just to float. The other part of that is you're wanting to get it on a schedule. So, unlike the side caster that needs to come every three months. part of that is you're wanting to get it on a schedule. So, unlike the sidecaster that needs to come every three months to keep the six-foot channel open, well, if you want to keep a six-foot channel open, dredge it to 16 or 18 feet and then it stays open for five years.
Right.
And that's what you want to get on. And so, you get this on a cycle that is a fundable, manageable cycle that you're not bringing a dredge in and wasting that $2, $3, $5, $8 million in mobilization each, each go-around because that's a fixed cost.
So, that would be part of the permitting process you're talking about.
Yes, absolutely. We, we would look at taking, using cedar bush cut and so basically from the intercoastal waterway, the crossroads, everything from the intercoastal cross, intercoastal waterway all the way down out to the inlet, and we would be looking at, at a depth of whatever we could get to, 16 plus two preferably, if we could get, if we had good material going even potentially a little bit deeper. Big thing will be you have underlying limestone formations that are relatively shallow here. And I think they were close on them. I know there was some peat that they got across when they did the first go-around when Marinix was here. So, we've got to avoid those kind of things. But obviously, we want to go as much sand at one time as possible.
When we did, when Marinix dredged the inlet, I think we went down to 16 or 18 feet.
14 plus two.
Yeah, it was, it was a mess. It was, it was deep.
Yes.
And I always understood those, those numbers. Those are the Corps of Engineer guidelines for what they're going to dredge it to when they come in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or when they authorize a dredging, fund it.
When, when they, when they, if they were going to, if they were going to do a hydraulic dredging project in this inlet, switch from the sidecaster. Because right now, the way it is authorized, only the, the merit is the only dredge that can work in New River. If they were to convert over to hydraulic or even probably going to the Merton or the Currituck, they would go down to at least 14 plus two.
Right.
I know when CPNE had their plan to straighten the inlet and work on it that way, that one of the problems they ran into in getting it to go as deep as they wanted was, and I'm not sure this is the right term, that there was artifacts or something that precluded them from going as deep as they wanted to?
There was a peat layer.
Peat layer. Is that what that...
It, it was. If, if you, if you, I don't know, were you here during the project then?
Not on the board. I was sitting out there.
Were you here on, okay, but you were here on the island?
Yes, yes.
He was in the media.
Well, if you...
I was in the media.
Did you ever go, did you ever go down and watch the dredging project and watch, watch the sand come out of the pipe?
Yes.
So, you would, you would see there and you see all the sand coming out of the end of the pipe?
Right.
And about every 30 seconds, you'd see this poing, 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 the clay balls?
Yeah.
That was the peat layer.
Ah. All right. Is there any, I love this project that you've outlined. This looks very encouraging. Is there any hiccups that you can foresee that we may need to mitigate in any way at this time?
Sure. So, there are a couple of them and that's why we've got, we're going, saying we need to do one, two, and three as a standalone. What happens with the terminal groin and that north end really impacts your long-term plan. Right now, as part of the document that was held up earlier, I believe it says you can't use New River Inlet as a sand source until the terminal groin or something to that effect. So, until there is something in place that navigation-wise, shore protection-wise stabilizes that north end, digging the hole right next to those houses, not a good idea. So, that has a huge impact on what we're looking at long-term. So, we're, in this plan, the hope is by the time we need New River, that the terminal groin has gone through and has been constructed or we've had some other way of managing that north end that has come to fruition. But yes, that has, that, that's the big, that's the really big hiccup in this plan.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions? No, it was an excellent presentation, Chris. I hope everybody in the audience and those who watch from home get as much out of it as we as a board did. I think it's the first time since I've been here in the audience or up here watching that I, I feel like we actually have something that's attainable and reachable for us to be able to get our beaches where we'd like them to be.
That was one of the most exciting things when I started going through this and I started looking at it and seeing that there was a potential to do this without going back to the bank.
You can actually do it. Right.
It actually can be done. Because when we looked at stuff 20 years ago, the plan that was laid out then was, was fiscally very tough with the amount of grants and whatnot that were out there. It's a different, it's a different story today.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to... Oh, no, we're not doing a motion.
Larry wanted to talk after.
Oh, Larry.
Thank you, Chris. You did a great job. My, here. That suits all of me. The, the, is it appropriate that we have any, do we need some kind of a request to get the, to, to get the permitting started so that we can do something with this? I mean, I don't know how long it's going to take the board to, to determine what, you know, I know you've got to sit down and digest all the monies and everything else. But I mean, is it a feel-good enough thing that we could begin to, to get some permitting in place?
I think that if you ask any board member here, they would love to go ahead and approve that today. But realistically, we can't really do that without having feedback and guidance from Alice as well as how it impacts the current budget, when would be the right time to do it, do, how does it, you know?
Right.
We don't have monopoly money. So, we just have to make sure that we, we know what we're doing. So, I personally would like to put it potentially on the agenda for next month and talk about a plan if that's appropriate. Ricky, you look like you have a different idea.
I have a different opinion. We've got a budget from him that talks about 600, only for the permitting and doing that kind of stuff, which I think we're going to have to do regardless. And we actually have money under Future Projects Fund. We've got a million two in this current fiscal year's budget for future projects. So...
Is that in the beach fund?
Yes, in the beach fund.
Yeah.
It's the last, it's actually the last line of the schedule.
I agree with you, Alderman, because we're not asking for the whole enchilada right now. We're just getting started and...
Yeah, I think everybody's on the same page.
The $600,000 is over, over two years. So, and we've already got a million surplus. That's why I was asking earlier. We do have the million surplus. Are we going to use some of it for this? Are we going to use some to apply for Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund to fix the dunes that are eroded?
But the 650, only 450 would be allocated in using this budget funds, this million two. And...
He said calendar year. Rick, could you pull up the funding slide?
Because I have FY '24 and FY '25.
It was 675,000 total year.
I heard him say calendar year, too. But I just want to know when this would hit.
Well, she's, while he's bringing it up, here's the issue I've got. Chris was saying, he broke it down for us by saying, "I think I'm only going to spend this much money through June 30th and then I'm going to spend the rest of the money after that." My concern is that, not that I question his schedule, but I don't want to have this thing get stopped for a month because we didn't have $50,000 budgeted for, for, in '25. We have, you know, if there, he is telling us he's probably not going to spend the entire 675,000 this fiscal year. What I'm saying is we already have the money in the budget this fiscal year. We can give him the authority to spend up to that this fiscal year.
Is he going to spend that in four months?
He's going to get it started.
Well, that's what I'm just saying. So, you're asking for approval on that amount, but it would carry over to the next budget cycle as well?
Right. And we can, we can revisit it if, you know, in the next budget cycle. But what I'm, what I was talking about in the calendar year is Chris believes he can get all of this work done in this calendar year. The problem is it's in, it's a split fiscal year.
It overlaps fiscal year.
Right. So, I mean, Tom, what do you, I mean, I just, I would just rather get the approval going forward on this thing and say, "Let's get four." I just don't want the, I don't want the schedule to get messed up because we didn't approve enough money this fiscal year. That's my point.
So, what's the line item in the budget?
No, it's on there. It's Future Projects. It's the last, it's 1.2A for Future Projects. It's in Caitlin's presentation.
So, we were not initially asking for a motion. It sounds like the board would like to make a motion.
I think we were asking originally, not for a motion to approve the...
The whole plan.
The plan, but a motion to approve the funding for the permit work.
Non-construction expenses. That's, that would be the thing.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-construction expenses over FY '24 and '25, not to exceed 675 in calendar year 2024.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving forward.
It's a monumental day.
Yes, it is.
Drinks are on Larry.
Okay, so...
Want to turn the push-to-talk off there?
Oh, I thought you may have somebody come up to talk.
There you go.
Okay, so then we're going to go ahead and move on to new business. And the first item is Alderman Grant with the schedule for the planning board for 2024.
Crosswalks.
Oh, shoot, I missed crosswalks. I'm sorry. NC DOT crosswalks. Do we have our super, there he is. Superintendent Cably.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the board.
I didn't mean to forget.
That's all right. This topic's going to pale in comparison to what we just went through. You know, it reminds me when I was in school, it was all the hydrology engineers. We boring civil guys just were in awe of these guys because they had more brain power than us most of the time. We just wanted to know when the next time to drink, what's happening. So, as the board may remember, back in December, brought this report to you regarding the existing, well, it's twofold. I'll just say, right now, it's pedestrian crossings, which is, this seems to be a time to talk about new terminology. So, your staff would like to use pedestrian crossings because there seems to be a lot of other nomenclatures that you use that seems to be a bit confusing. So, I have a summary for you as this update provided. We did hear back from NC DOT. So, this is going to be a, a good news and we'll wait and see if there's even more good news later in this report. As the board may recall, there were the existing pedestrian crossings that were being reviewed by NC DOT, as well as a request for new locations to be added of these pedestrian crossings. So, to date, we have received a response on this and the good news is that NC DOT is in favor of an agency. It is a policy apparently that I was not aware of, that they defer to the local agency if they would like to use and fund enhanced pedestrian crossings, of which is attached to your staff report. You'll see an example. It's sort of a cafeteria plan, if you will, of what you want to fund. Essentially, it's $25,000 is what you're looking at per location. There are two ways in which NC DOT has participated in the past and that is each time the agency does pay for it, either through grant funding or through their own funds, and they tell NC DOT, "Please install it for us." And then there's the other way, which is just give us a permit and we'll install it ourselves. So, either way, NC DOT is asking for a maintenance agreement to be executed by the agency. They would ask that of us for each location. It would not be a blanket maintenance agreement for all of them. Perhaps we could look at that down the road if, in fact, we do end up installing more than one location. Along with NC DOT's look at our existing pedestrian crossings, we asked them to rate or give us their opinion of which is the most dire or what they saw was the most severe and requiring enhanced pedestrian crossings. I believe the mayor may recall, it was the crossing of Via Capriani that was brought up. They neglected, they, let's just say that they were reluctant to render any ranking. Based on the recent traffic data, which I'll push, put, push the pause button on this presentation, say that the board may recall devices that were placed on them there recently. That was not as a result of our request. It was a normal speed and volume study. And so, I have something to come back to at the end of this report that the NC DOT is asking as a result of that data. So, to go on, NC DOT is now saying that whatever ranking we would desire to fund and to put in, they would support. That's the good news. To go on to the new locations, they will probably need a minimum of 60 more days, two more months to render theirs. Now, at this point, I would think that it would be prudent for us to entertain other locations, of which we heard of one this morning. One criteria, I believe the board should, and I, I think as a newbie, I feel almost embarrassed bringing this up, but every one of the pedestrian crossings are because of beach access. So, perhaps we look at the whole corridor. And I did that in looking at Surf Cities and each one of their pedestrian crossings are also beach access. We can verify that. The lone remaining crossings that could be entertained further south should be looked at. Perhaps NC DOT said that that would be our call, of course. Now, they would study those new locations and render an opinion. And depending on that opinion, fellow engineers would tell you that, that there's, the one criteria that can, is the great equalizer in all warrants. And in this case, it would be engineering judgment. If in the opinion of the agency, if even though the warrants are not met on any of the new locations, you could use engineering judgment and have them installed. I would caution the, the board, in my experience in doing this traffic engineering, that the legal counsel be sought from our attorney. And of course, he wouldn't be here right now. But I would say that we would be best if we got an opinion from him, if we went ahead and did that. If we added more locations, I would say give them more time, probably up to a six-month period, to come back with all of the new locations that the board would request. And we would wait to see what new locations, if any, they would recommend. And then we would go forward from there. I believe that concludes my staff report. The one item I did want to add in there is in regard to the types of enhancement. The response we did get from NC DOT was, was surprising. You'll see on your handout, there's a lighted or called in- roadway lighting systems. They strongly discourage those. Apparently, it's 100% that whenever an agency has put them in, and they do not put them in, NC DOT does not, because they come out in a matter of three to five years because of maintenance. From everything, I believe it's because of the temperature, the fluctuation. In California, we had them everywhere and they stayed, you know, because the weather didn't change that much. So, consider that in your deliberation as you look at enhanced locations. With that, I'll stop and that concludes the staff report.
Questions from the board?
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, in, in looking at this design, no lights, do you have a recommended in the coastal area what it looks like? Because...
Great question. Okay. So, I like to use, being a traffic guy, I like to use the car, you know. So, you want the, you want the Kia. Okay, so you're talking about a lighted, solar lighted light, no pedestrian actuated, motion actuated only, no in-surface lighting and no additional lighting from an external street light. Those are about half the price and for the each installation. And that's the Kia. Okay. You want the Volvo, all right? And I say that because I'm a BMW guy. So, I think it's a little higher. Any case, the Volvo would be that you would also, some traffic engineers like to err on, you know, being a bit more conservative in that, just in case the motion detector did not pick them up, to also have a manual. So, you throw that on there as well as the overhead lighting, an additional street light that actually shows the crosswalk being lit. That would be the next version. And then, of course, pick your whatever Tesla, whatever model you want to say. That would be what you see before you. Everything lit up, everything actuated.
So, based on density and the risk in the area, you could have a plan that had the different models of crosswalks based on the area?
Yes. But that's, that would be an excellent approach.
Not one size fits all. So, you could do the various models based on what was required from an engineering standpoint. Right.
This would probably be an appropriate point to share about JUMPo, the Jacksonville Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. They have funding that's available, not for these installations, but for the planning part of it. They could study it, come up with a corridor concept, if you will. That might be a way we go. I spoke to them this morning and they would be open to having us propose something like that to them.
I want to follow up on that real quick and something the mayor said last time. When I thought we were looking at this, and again, I don't spend that much time in Surf City. I don't remember anything like this in Surf City. And I've seen the crosswalks, and Mayor, you said this last time, it's a sign that's got somebody on it, lots of sign and a painted street.
Right.
All right. Because what I'm concerned about, anything like this, is the word maintenance. You know, we start building stuff that's got, you know... You know, we start building stuff that's got, you know, all you gotta do is take a look at your, your heating units in your house, or air conditioning units, and find out how long this stuff lasts. I thought we were talking about more where painted big signs and everything else, but I, you know, I'm not even sure I've seen it. Is there even a crosswalk there where you hit a button, insert, on the island?
In Surf City, I do think they have some, I've seen them, yeah.
But if we started in every beach access, that's a bad precedent, I think.
You can't even get off the island, you'll be going five miles an hour.
Exactly.
As a Kia driver.
No offense. I own a Honda.
I would like to echo my fellow aldermen. I would be curious about the density, where we would need ones that were more, more BMW, and which ones are more of the Kia. And I am also very interested in maintenance cost for something that is on the BMW side. In a coastal community.
Expected life on those are about 10 years, eight to 10 years. Of course, it's pretty forgiving, as I said, in California, because the weather did not have the extremes, right?
So, my other follow-up question was to your funding statement, which was, you know, the state has said that we can pick up the funding and just, they'll approve where we want to put them.
That's right.
Nice of them, isn't it?
Isn't it nice?
Tell us to have at it.
But my question was, the list that we presented is not really a comprehensive list all the way through the south part of the town. So, BA 19, 11th Avenue, you know, 60 townhouses that dump there.
Right.
I mean, we haven't looked further down all the way to Surf City line.
That's correct.
So, if we go back to them, does it, you mentioned waiting six months, so are we in a situation where we need to move forward with the ones they've already looked at, and then look at additional?
Well, much like you were just, you know, hadn't made that decision on the funding part, I would say it's the same issue. They have a backlog, so I would say now, let's have them take a look at what they already have, we have their attention, let's have them do that, and at the same time, we can approach JUMPo and say, with the manager's direction too, that this is what we'd like to look at on the corridor, and if that makes sense, and then throw everything else in that makes sense, they do it. I, you know, it's not rocket science, you know, they, they'll be able to do that, and not, you know, extend and delay their findings anymore.
I think Mayor Proton was next, Tom.
A question and a comment. The question is, the system that you're showing on the screen looks pretty cool. But, for the pedestrian, does it give them a false sense of security? For the pedestrian, there's no indication of when they should cross that crosswalk, other than, does the car stop, correct? There's no walk, don't walk sign associated with it. So, my point is, it's still on the pedestrian to make sure the cars stop before they enter the crosswalk. And does this electronic system with the warning and yada yada, does that improve the safety? Has there been any studies done where this kind of system has prevented more pedestrian accidents than just the painted lines across the street and the crosswalk signs? Do you have any information on that?
There are, there are a number of studies through the years that have come up. I'm not sure if they're gonna be so specific to the difference between just the, you know, more passive systems versus the more active ones that have the lit roadways, but there are numerous studies that do show that there are, there is a safety advantage, but there's sort of, you know, a benefit cost that you have to weigh as a, as a community for the long-term maintenance of that, because once it's turned on, unless you turn it off, then you'll be, you'll continue to maintain it.
Here's my other point, this is for the town manager. If we do decide to go with a more elaborate and expensive and maintenance system, I believe that the crosswalk at 790 New River Island Road is 100% for residents of Villa Capriani. I think their homeowners association should contribute to the cost. Likewise, BA Access 2, if we put a crosswalk in there, that crosswalk serves the other half of their parking lot at BA 1, the county beach access. So, again, the county should be asked to contribute to the cost of a more elaborate system.
So, Mike, I would, so first of all, I think I was the one that brought this up, and really, my whole goal and desire is that the cars stop. I just want the cars to stop. I don't think that it would be fair to ask the owners of Villa Capriani, they're parking, for the most part, in their parking spaces, it's the residents going, it's the residents of the community going to the restaurant. That's the ones that are typically in danger, so.
I agree.
I don't think we need something as elaborate at that, as that, and I think it's always, no matter what you have, the pedestrian still has to make sure, they look and make sure the car's not coming. So, but.
Some of us are walking into the road right now, and putting our hands up to stop the traffic in the summer, and getting cars to stop so that we can let people cross over.
Is there a crosswalk there? There's no crosswalk then, right?
No, I'm not.
But they don't stop, is the point, the pedestrian is coming and they still don't stop. But, so, I think what we're saying is, do we want a plan to move forward with what we have already asked for today, and then also work with Jumbo to see if we could do a larger scale study townwide?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Well, concerning the diagram up there, Public Works Director already gave his recommendation, was to not go that elaborate, so I think, I think that in and of itself is, ought to be off the table, I mean, that, that just has got Maintenance Nightmare painted all over it, especially, especially on a barrier island. Secondary to that, I, I agree, we need the crosswalks in the places that we've talked about, I like the idea of going to JUMPo, I think that's good. The question I have for you, and I don't expect you to answer, but it's more something I want to get out in the open, is, why in the heck does DOT pick the lowest traffic density time of the year?
I know.
To, to put their monitors out and do the studies here? I mean, it's, it's not worth the time it takes to do it in December or January, they ought to be doing it in July.
Madam Mayor, and members of the board, this is the other item I did want to share. So, those counters were placed up because they have received from outside of the community concerns of the speed. So, these were, they're speed volume, okay, those contraptions will, will measure both, but it was primarily for speed. So, the question that NCOT asked me to ask the board and bring before you for your consideration is, based on this new data, would you be willing to reduce the speed limits in through North Topsoil? And that's a discussion that you, that.
But even if we reduce the speed, the people aren't stopping.
Well.
But are we looking to go to 35?
Exactly, they, they have now data that, that they can report back, and that's the reason that those counters were, were in place, was not for the volume so much, Alderman Leonard, but for speed, so.
How do those counters take into consideration different wheelbase lengths of cars? This goes back to ninth grade science project.
Okay. That's why there's rhetorical questions.
I mean, I saw, I saw the counters, I see what they do, I just, you know, I'm thinking.
Yeah, but you back it up for four times.
Well, yeah.
All right, well, let's just, guys, let's stay focused, and let's see if we can continue through this, because we're running onto a really long meeting.
It's just for him to go forward, I don't think you need a motion, do you?
I don't think I need a motion, do I? Do we need, just need a direct staff to continue moving?
What are you asking?
To go to Jumbo?
Well, to go to Jumbo for the larger scale study and see if they'll assist us, but I think we need to move forward with some type of enhanced system or design, whatever you want to call it, for the existing identified.
Are you saying that the board is willing to pay?
I don't know, well, I don't know how much the Kia costs, so I need to know how much that is.
I have no problem.
The painted crosswalk and the sign, that, if I know what they have.
Right, but are we asking, is there a motion on the table to ask staff to take the existing list and put dollars to that list with the different models we, that they're coming up with, and then give us a plan with a budget to approve?
Yeah, because we can always go up, we can always start out with the, with the paint that glows or is reflective, and some signs, we can always add.
True.
So, I think what we're asking is, and I, I agree with Connie too, is, let's, since we're gonna do a larger study, let's start with something a little bit more simplistic to get the driver's attention, if you could come up with something to, to bring that back to us, and give us an idea of cost, then we can at least keep moving forward with these, and then see if we need to enhance based on other recommendations.
We've talked about costs, hold on, we've talked about costs offline, and the idea is to come up with some costs for the budget meeting, because this will have to be included.
Yes, ma'am.
But if we all are also in, in agreement that we're not interested in that because of its maintenance aspects, or something of that, something that's that elaborate, then they don't need to look at that.
Correct.
They don't, they don't need, they don't need to spend time on, on putting that together.
Right, so what we're asking staff was to look at the more simplistic with the list that was already identified, and put cost to that list.
I believe I've gotten enough direction on that.
Mike, you need to step in, it's Proton. For a minute, she had to step up.
So, Mayor Proton, and members of the board, one other item would be, any new locations would be, this would be timely to go ahead and let NC DOT, that we've added, whatever, lists for, of new locations for them to study.
So, we're in agreement with what's been suggested?
Yes.
Yes, and I do think there are other, we had some suggestions from the audience, and from, I made a suggestion.
Yeah, that was beach access one, it's 1750.
That we haven't looked all the way down.
Right.
So, that we need to add those locations as well, but we don't want to stop your work from moving forward with the existing list, going to JUMPo to see if they can help with the study, and then adding the additional ones we come up with based on density that cross over to the beach accesses, all the way down to Surf City line.
Well, county might want to get involved to help us too, since.
Right, I think, I think the county does need to be involved.
Well, and I think that it should be, the county should be approached with the cost estimates that, that are the county crossings.
Yep, exactly.
That would only be fair, in my opinion.
Right.
And they're in the middle of budgets right now.
Okay.
I apologize, my mother was in the hospital, I thought it was her. So, what am I doing?
Speaking of this now.
We're moving on.
Okay, we're moving on.
Okay, again, my apologies.
Okay.
We're gonna move on now, we're gonna move on to new business with Alderman Grant with the planning board.
Just real quick, we agreed at this last time, but apparently, we didn't do a motion, so I, you know, just, so, somebody make a motion, have, have the town attorney there, and I thought that the, the schedule was based upon him being available on those dates too, right? So.
Yes, he said that he had spoken with both Ms. Hill and with Mr. Ian about his schedule, so I'm assuming that was the first Thursday of every month, that he's available.
Okay, so here a motion then, or, I'm sorry.
So, can someone?
I'll make a motion, that the town attorney be in attendance at the planning board meetings, the vote that worked for his schedule and is now agreed upon.
The first Thursday, the, yeah.
She's reading.
Yeah.
She said, just read that.
Okay, new business.
The one with your reading log.
A motion for the town attorney's attendance at all planning board meetings that will be held on the first Thursday of each month, effective on March 7th at 6:00 PM.
And so, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
Yes.
Okay. Mike is on the one that objected, okay. And then, we're gonna move on to planning, the planning board live streaming of meetings with Alderman Olszewski, is that better?
Yes, thank you. I'm proposing that we livestream the planning meetings, so more people would be aware of the issues coming to the planning board and how they're being addressed. We livestream the Board of Aldermen meetings, and have, and we've got the tech to also stream the planning meetings.
And Board of Adjustments.
Yeah. So, why don't we start with the normal process, which would be a motion, a second, and then discussion?
Make a motion to livestream the planning board meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
I totally agree. I think that we can, we can and should be as open as, as possible, so that as many people can see what's going on and how this town is run, and people that are more aware, the more people, the better.
Any additional discussion?
I'm gonna take the opposite view right now. We spent a lot of time last year discussing whether we would even record the planning board meetings, and I think we came up to kind of a agreement at the point that time, that we would record the meetings, but not broadcast them. So, I feel like we need to give that decision that's less than a year old, a little bit more time to play out, before we go to livestreaming the planning board meetings.
Any additional discussion?
You got a motion in the seconds.
Okay, can we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the motion passes. Okay, and then the next item is also Ms. Olszewski, and that is the town meeting room usage by outside entities.
So, Town Hall in the past, sorry, it was brought to my attention by a former alderman who served in the late 90s, early 2000s, who was a resident as well in Bermuda Landing, that the town was used by HOAs on the island to have their annual business meetings. This has been requested of the town again, so that these groups do not have to go off the island for their meetings, or to try to pay facilities off the island for their meetings. And so, my proposal is that we add this back as a service to our taxpaying community, that they could have, HOAs on the island can have their annual business meetings, I'm not saying we're opening things up for parties, you know, or social events, but that if an HOA has an annual business meeting, that there is an opportunity for them to use Town Hall for that meeting, and that that's, that's request, that's what the request is. So, I'm making a motion, we put that back on a list, possibly with a cleaning service fee, possibly with a fee to, if we need staff to cover the meeting, but I'd like to open this up for discussion.
Okay, so we will do the, the same thing, actually, we could probably just go around, this would end up being a motion, this would end up still being a motion, so why don't we do the motion, the second, and discussion? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve using the Town Hall meeting room by outside entities?
I, I would like to discuss it, because I, I think that we have to be specific on what we're, what we're requesting, because I think, as you pointed out, we talked, she called me, we talked about it, is, there's issues about staffing, there's issues about cleaning, there's issues about all that kind of stuff, what's restricted, what's not. You know, I have no problem during normal business hours, because then you can protect stuff, but I think you get into the issue of, and odd hours, protecting what's here, locking stuff down, and so I think that.
But I even have some issues with normal business hours, because we are using, just one second, we are using this room also for folks who have trouble with their permits and getting them in, and needing a place to talk, and a place to meet with staff to be able to get that stuff done, as well as merchandise, if we're, we're selling, we actually got a pretty good business going here with merchandise, so we're gonna need to expand that as well. So, there's a few things to keep in mind, yes, sir.
Motion, second, discussion, where are we in the process?
Nobody made a motion.
I'll make a motion for, what purposes of discussion, to, wait, how do I want to say it?
Consider.
To consider having the town, having the meeting room used for residents and outside entities. Okay, that's it.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, so, discussion.
I thought the issue, and I thought the motion was gonna be pertaining to homeowners associations only, and so now, we've opened it further than what the intent was, and what you said you wanted to make the motion to, because you talked in your discussion, Laura.
Well, I'd like to ask Connie, does she see the need for other community groups to use the room?
So, maybe Laura should have made the motion, the way Laura wanted the motion made.
I'm gonna leave the motion the way it was, because you may have, you may have a group, or, or maybe a neighborhood that is, does not have a homeowners association, but that would like.
For a business meeting.
So, for the purpose of discussion, we'll leave it the way it is.
So, we have a motion, a second, so now we're. So we have a motion, a second, so now we're open for discussion, I've already said what my concerns are.
I'll just offer that back when gentleman was, gentleman was on the board back in the nineties, there wasn't a public library right up here, and I know it's off the island, but it's barely off the island and it's got facilities that are able to be used for those kinds of things. I'm also concerned about the audio visual equipment that's in here. We'd have to provide some level of security for that if it were after hours. Other things like that come to mind, I mean, there, there are alternatives here in the area now that weren't here when the gentleman that you're referring to was a board member.
Correct, but our community, for instance, has looked at the library and the fire marshal has their, those rooms raided where they're not large enough for our community to go there. So, so this room actually could handle some of the communities that used to meet at Town Hall.
What is the limit on the library meeting rooms, because I'm not aware of that?
I thought the one room was forty-five.
How many members do you have in your HOA?
Oh, homeowners, over, over sixty.
Well, how many usually come to meetings, your annual meetings?
To have a forum, we're over the amount.
Sixty people aren't going to fit in here either.
Right, so what's, I understand your point, but we're.
The fire marshal's not going to let you have sixty people in this room either, I don't think.
So my point is, we're asking taxpayers to go off the island, spend money out of their community, go to North Shore, go look for a place to meet when we have a Town Hall that's their Town Hall. And I will stand with the motion to open it up so that I support Connie in that if we have groups that want to use the room, that we allow them to and we look at the logistics, which there are some, and I would agree with you Alderman Leonard, but that we need to start accommodating citizens in this town for their meetings.
I'm, I'm lost, because Connie's, Connie's motion said, she opened it up for discussing the issue, not resolving the issue. So the motion, right, the motion is not to make a resolution, it's to continue a discussion on this and try to work through the process. I'm fine with that process to try to figure out if there is a solution. Because I think your motion Connie was not to approve doing it, it was to.
Discuss.
Have it discussed and move forward with trying to figure out if there's a way to do it.
She said consider.
Right, is that what you wanted Laura, was to?
So Connie, are you looking for us to come back with logistics and, at the next Alderman meeting to see how we could address the logistics of security, opening the room, locking the room, and staffing, and then what hours it would be available to the community?
I would like, I would like to hear some discussion and see what people think, I can see pros and cons to both sides. Personally, I would not want it other than business hours if we did open it up for many of the reasons that, that Alderman Leonard said. I am concerned about our audio visual equipment, I'm concerned about several different, different aspects. On the other side of the coin, I do feel like there, these are taxpaying citizens, this is their Town Hall as well. And yet I still have very many concerns about opening it up to many entities. That's why I'd like to hear other people's concerns and pros and cons, I'd like to hear the pros and cons, I'm very open minded on this.
So we could go back to my original thoughts were for HOA meetings or to your point, for neighborhood meetings who don't have an HOA. So we're not necessarily opening it up to any group.
Do we know how many?
I think you would need to be careful because then you're excluding.
Discriminating, okay.
Groups.
Discriminating, how many people fit in this room?
The, the last policy that you had in place, it referenced one hundred people max.
Wow.
So I don't know, I mean, I would, I would personally want to take another look at that because that was not something that I came up with and I don't know how that was.
Is there not supposed to be a sign on the wall?
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
Chad.
Would you be comfortable with a hundred people in here?
Without chairs.
Right, they circled through though, they weren't meeting, yeah. Okay.
But were you, but did you have, were you here, I don't think you were, when that hundred capacity max was set? That's why I'm saying we need to.
Look at that.
Take a further look into this and I think, you know, at this point in time, I mean, I would have concerns about opening up to certain people and excluding others, that, that would.
It's either open or no.
Problematic, and I think Brian would have to weigh on this as well. I think the, the point right now is if there's a consensus of the board where they want me to spend time on this to come up with a policy.
Well, the other, the other thing I would like to bring up is it could be an alternative revenue stream for the town too because if you did want to.
It was on the fee schedule for so many years and nobody used it, there was no revenue.
It was fifty bucks to, to rent it, and I've seen this room pre Florence even used for when Don Martin, the former mayor, when his wife passed away, the reception meal after the service was held in here. I mean, you know, where do you draw, and, and the illustration is, back to the manager's point, where does one, where do we draw the line?
So you could draw the line between business meetings and social gatherings.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, I don't foresee that as being the issue, it's more as if you decide to try to, you know, split hairs even further saying HOA meetings or, you know, different groups that you, you need to. I'm not the attorney, but I would say you need to be careful.
It just needs to be flushed out, I think.
I think we need to look at what other towns are doing Connie, to, we've opened the discussion and see because it is the citizens Town Hall.
That's a fair point. But the flip side of that, you know, is it's also the citizens Town Hall for us to protect too, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
But we're talking, we're talking business meetings, not parties.
Is it the board's intent too, to, you're, you're saying that I'm hearing during business hours, but a lot of these meetings are going to take place on the weekends?
Yeah, HOA meetings are not going to be in the town.
No, no.
So we would have to have staff present?
I mean, I think there should be an option, it could be an option for staff to make overtime, could be an option for the, the town to charge, you know, to use the room. Because there, these groups are having to leave the island and pay, why not have them pay the town?
So I think what we're asking right now, what Alice's question is right now is, does any, does the board want her to spend time working through all the details associated with this or not? So I think that's the question on the table, I know we had a motion and a second, but I, it doesn't sound to me like that motion, I mean, we can vote on that one, but I think that's not going to pass because we don't have any details associated with what this would be.
So do we just need to vote on whether Alice needs to spend the time?
On the policy, to come back with a policy.
Right, but, but in terms of priorities, no offense, this is not a high priority compared to all the beach work and stuff.
And the budget.
As, as time allows, right?
Right, as time allows.
Okay.
I, I mean, I personally, I know I don't get to vote, but I'm not in favor of it.
Okay.
That's just me. Because of all the logistical issues surrounding it, I just, I think as Rick said, if it's a low priority, I don't even know when it would get to even be done, because certainly.
To do some research with other Town Halls and provide Alice some information to help her. But I would like to bring this back at next month's meeting.
Do you want to table it until next month and give everybody a chance to think about it?
Well, I'd like to get information provided to Alice by next, before next month's and bring it back on the agenda next month.
I, I can tell you Topsil does have one in place, but it's something that I was told this week that they intend on revisiting. So, and I've asked Surf City as well, I haven't received anything from that. But I do have copies of other ones from different areas outside of here. But it's just, you know, what the board wants to focus on.
I think it's a low priority, I don't want to see the town manager have to spend time trying to come up with different options.
I think Laura, you said you were going to spend some time pulling this stuff to other places too, so that's a good place to start. And that's what I do.
Well, if it's low priority and you put it back on the agenda next month, it can either be voted on or it can be voted down and then it won't be a priority at all.
So why don't we do this though for the next meeting, since there's so much going on with the beach projects? Do we want to request that just Laura bring what she has found?
Sure.
And then we can discuss as a board then, because then Alice is not expending effort on it, is that?
That'd be good.
Anything I find, I'll give to Alice and then she can send it out to the other board members.
It could come out in there with it. Okay, all right, we're going to move on. Mr. Ryan, the proposed ordinance for beach vitex, and I'm going to request a motion, because we've spoken about this earlier today, to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh-two beach vitex.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh-two beach vitex.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then the next item is myself, and it's regarding the Board of Adjustments. We've received a resignation of Stu Harness as a regular member and consideration of vacancy now on the Board of Adjustments. So what I'm doing is asking for a motion to acknowledge his resignation and then also request our town manager announce the opening so other residents can apply.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Just a quick discussion, the reason he's resigning is because when I talked to him before, he would have been on support. That's the reason he's resigning, there's nothing to have participated on this board. Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, and then consideration of BISAC committee appointments is also myself, so we've got a few terms that are expiring, Mr. Grant, Joe Gardner, and Terry Ward. And so the only question I had on this one, Alderman Grant, is does, do we know of all three folks, and you may know this too, sir, does everybody want to continue?
Yes.
So are you asking the board to acknowledge the expiration of the terms or also approve them staying on the board?
Stay on the board.
Stay on the board. One thing I'd like to say about this, and, and the, the BISAC committee takes a while to get up to speed as a member of the BISAC committee, just can't walk in and look at the minutes and, and know what's going on really in terms of coastal engineering and shoreline protection. We've just heard the report from both Franway and Chris Gibson, it's a pretty involved situation, it takes a while to learn. Chairman Struthers has been doing excellent job leading the committee for the last year. So I think it's appropriate just to approve the three members that are up, their terms have expired, that are up for the next, appoint them for the next three-year term.
And what Mike did mention is the way that we set up originally is we had the staggered term thing, so the people that are due to be redone.
These are currently two-year terms.
All right, I'll make the motion that we reappoint Rick Grant, John Gardner, and Terry Ward back onto the, the BISAC committee.
So are you asking for two-year or three-year terms now?
Three years.
For three years.
The intent was three years, but since everybody started the first year.
For three years.
We had to do a staggered term.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, we made it you guys to the open forum.
Yep.
Do we have, yes, please, come on up. Has anybody signed up for this one Nancy? Okay, okay, Fred, we let you go first, but then. It's okay, go ahead.
Yep, Fred Fontana, eighteen sixty-six New River Inlet Road. Just a reminder, while we're talking to NC DOT, this board approved a hundred thousand dollars to have DOT review the bikeways or design bikeways, and I haven't heard any update or status as to where that process is and I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't go by the wayside.
Thank you. Nancy, who has signed up?
Megan Scheibner.
I think they had to leave.
She's gone, and Fred Burns.
Fred's gone.
Okay.
That's it? Okay, come on up sir, and Susan, you can be next, do you want to be next?
Don Hibbert, two-two-six-four New River Inlet number one oh five. And on the last that was talked, they was talking about using the room. I would hate to see any tight restrictions because the Turtle Hospital uses this and it's been an excellent thing for the area and for the, and for the Turtle Hospital. So I'd hate to see any screws tightened up on that.
I think that's different because that's open to the public.
I, I agree, but somebody's going to go, well, they won't let me use it for my business, how come this business gets to use it? I'm a political refugee from California, so when, when he's talking about. When he's talking about the crossroads, you know, they, all these fancy stuff, probably eighty percent of the people don't use a crossroad anyway. So I would hate to see a lot of money spent on a crossroad. And for all of us that live here on New River at least, you know, you wash your, your car, your truck on Saturday, Sunday afternoon, it's got grit all over it, you know, and any push buttons and stuff is going to be really bad. My main reason why I wanted to talk is on the twenty thousand cubic yard left to, to go sandwise, these people that were here up on the far north end, you know, the car came in and dumped and they left like a fifteen feet from the sandbags to where their edge was, and then they went back in and filled up. So when the, the stand hand, the hauling started coming in, they came back towards the north there, but they came into, if you remember the picture that has the Big Dipper excavator there, they came up to building number six, I believe, and then there was a pipeline coming across that they wouldn't cross over. So I would highly recommend or suggest or hope that when that twenty thousand starts getting hauled again, that it starts like on building six where it was ended and go back towards the north end. I get maybe a half an hour to an hour where I can walk off my deck and not get my feet wet. And we've, we've lost five, five vertical feet of sand in my backyard. And, you know, the waves that are hitting our sandbags are now splashing water up on top of my sliding glass door. So anyway, that, I would hope that something could happen on that twenty thousand to get where there is no, no beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, did you want to speak?
Susan Meyer, two-two-two-four New River Inlet Road, Unit one thirty-eight. I wanted to speak a little bit about the sand as well. When Fran came up and spoke about that twenty thousand cubic yards, he said no, south of the reef. And then they spoke something of north of the reef, but the reef wasn't included. And I understand that the beach is bad up north of us. I wish that you all would consider the fact that the reef has always taken care of in front of their beach. We've spent millions on sandbags, not once, not twice, but three times. And as Don said, we need the sand just as much, and we have taken care of it. We didn't come to the town and ask for sandbags. So that's what I wanted to say about that. And then I wanted a clarification on the planning board. It was brought up that each planning board member, when their term was up, it just automatically went out and they had to reapply. But you're not doing it on the BISAC because there's a learning curve. However, there is a learning curve on the planning board and the Board of Adjustment. Very much so, so much so that we needed the alternates as a training ground for the actual committee sort of. So I would like for y'all to think about that as well.
We had to read Mr. Grant.
You just reappointed people without it going back out for.
That's her point.
We did go back out, we did go back out and the people that were on the board who's turned. term expired, they did reapply.
All right. I stand corrected. I did not realize that that's what it was. I thought it was just a blanket. It was a blanket, oh, if you want to be on the BISAC, if somebody leaves, you can get on it. That's what I read it as.
No, Susan, I'm sorry. I'll make that more clear next time. But yes, I had to read Rick's resume again.
Okay. All right. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
I have a quick question for Tom, and it may be in his closing remarks. Any new updates on the Cobra Act?
It's in my closing remarks.
Thank you, sir.
My Alderman report.
There you go. My closing remarks.
Anybody else in the audience?
Right here.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving then. The attorney is not here, so we'll skip right over that. The mayor's report, I was very pleased to see, and I had heard this the other day, too, that it wasn't gonna go through, but I didn't, I don't want to say anything till it happened. I don't like to jinx things. But I was pleased to see that the insurance increase did not go through, that that was not approved. I do have some clients who work in that industry, so I was getting updates during that. But I did have the opportunity to speak when they had it open for comments. And when I got on that Zoom meeting, there was over 200 people on there. I mean, everybody was in opposition. It was very difficult to hear on that. I don't know if anybody else joined it, but it was, no, those of us on the Zoom part, it was very easy. It was, you couldn't hear anything they were saying in the room. Like, it was just, it was hard. So, I was happy to see that, and I appreciate all the people coming today. I appreciate all the work that went into that beach plan. I think that is fantastic work, and I'm just thrilled to see if we can move that forward. So, I'm gonna start with Alderman Grant today.
Okay, just real briefly. Thanks for everybody that came, the comments. Kudos to Chris, without repeating what she said, on Wassa, on the pump station here. I think the last time I reported, it was a lead item that was 52 weeks. So, that's been cut to 20. I've got a note into Frankie, the head of it, to find out what that means for us. The solution that they've got in place right now, which we insisted on before, is you have to assume that's not gonna happen over the summer. So, they're doing the meter thing with Surf City. They're gonna make sure that that water comes in that way. So, they're prepared, basically, to go forward without the pump station being operational this summer. Because I think, I don't know how we, they entered into a contract, they had a 52-week lead time on a project. So, it looks like it's taking care of this summer. But again, we need to move forward with that as quickly as we can. Thank you for Connie.
I just wanted to thank the town, and I attended a two-day class essentials of municipal government offered by UNCW and the School of Government and the North Carolina League of Municipalities. So, that was a great training for me. I appreciate that. Alderman Leonard and I attended the New Year's reception at Camp Lejeune. That was a terrific event, and it was my first time on base. So, very, very good for me to do that. And I wanted to also say that the town manager and staff are working diligently on issues for the citizens of North Topsil Beach. And I would encourage residents to get involved and to continue to volunteer for positions on the town committees.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Earlier this week, I spoke with Ray Celeste up in Congressman Murphy's office, and then Mike McIntyre, Stephanie Missard, who are lobbyists up in Washington concerning where we are with House Resolution 2437, which is our Cobra bill. It is still in the process of being scored by the Congressional Budget Office. I was informed that this could take up to several months, and at this point, all we can really do is allow it to run its course. I explained to all of them in various phone calls that I'm concerned about us potentially losing the momentum that we created and enjoyed last year, that got us where we were with testifying and getting a vote to the full committee and National Resources Committee. And I don't want to lose that. A lot of work put into that, and it's good for the town right now. But it will be, I was assured that we will, when we go to Washington in April for our annual visit, it will be the subject of getting in to see certain people in the various committees and our congressmen regarding making sure that this thing stays up where it needs to be. One of the issues that we can all imagine is watching the national news, the level of stuff that's going on right now, everything from Israel to, you know, everything, impeachments and the election, everything. It's hard to get housekeeping-level business done, which is what this is. But I'll stay on top of it and make my calls once a month before the meeting and make sure we've got nothing new and kind of remind people like Mike McIntyre to help us keep kicking his can down the road, which he's very effective at doing. I also attended the New Year's reception with Laura. It was a little bit disheartening for me at the very end to have a young guy come up to me and say, "Hey, sir, I don't know if you remember me, but I was Lieutenant McWilliams, and I was the general's aide when you were here, and now his first name is Brigadier General." Makes you feel a little old, and go Chiefs.
I want to thank everybody for coming out or for watching at home. And thank you, everybody that gets up to speak. It's really good to hear the voices of the community. I want to thank Alice and her staff for everything they do, and I am especially pleased with the report that we got from Chris Gibson. That was, I think, I think Alderman Grant said this is the most we've seen moving forward. Oh, Joanne. Well, you guys, you know. I'm just thrilled. All right. Thank you very much, and have a safe February.
Yeah, I will echo my colleague's comments and just report briefly on the Topsil Island Shoreline Protection Commission meeting last month. We were going through our accomplishments, and I would encourage you to look on the tispc.org website, look at the accomplishments. We had quite a successful year. The two highlights I wanted to mention, one was the effort to ban non-encapsulated polystyrene in dock floats and piers. That got past the county level, and it's gonna become state law as of July 1, 2025. So, a good effort there to avoid pollution from non-encapsulated polystyrene in the environment. And the other thing was derelict vessels. We were hoping to get a county ban on derelict vessels behind Topsil Island, and it went to be clear up to Raleigh. And Senator Ozaro and Representative Carson Smith worked on the bills in the House and the Senate to put a ban on derelict vessels in coastal counties. And you'll know, last month in December, this board adopted an ordinance in that light so that we can ban and remove derelict vessels. So, just a couple of the highlights, Alderman Leonard mentioned the Cobra. We've gotten farther than we ever have before with Cobra. So, I'd encourage you to look at the accomplishments on the tispc.org webpage.